We've got a couple of presentations and folks are here for. And so we're going to move the agenda around a little bit. We will begin with public comment and then move to our presentations and then back to the public hearing this time around. So let's begin with the public comment. So we've got Marilyn Smith. Marilyn Smith, Port Angeles City resident. The Charter for Compassion. Really? Compassion is an action. Change takes action. Let's review some recent examples of the city's compassion. February 8th, a sequoia tree named Hope was felled by the city. The council failed to take action to block this because the mayor waffled. There were other compromises possible, but I guess we have no compassion for trees. August 18th, a temporary fence is erected around the Liberty Vale. So now cold and miserable people have no centrally located public park with shelter. Do I hear the city talking about building one? Completely trash cans, needle disposals, benches, and a 24-hour public access toilet? No. We don't even set up municipal warming centers when the weather is at its worst. Do we have compassion for people who are down and out? Evidently not. This last holiday weekend, the city closed off parking on Eighth Street blocking shops from much-heated businesses. At the city, no one would claim it. No one could fix it. We've shut down parking spots before. We've closed streets. No warning to business. It's a legacy. Do we have compassion for small businesses? Nope. And tonight, we'll see a presentation on some new, completely unfathomable, confusing methodology to calculate our utility bills. It looks like an increase. You have a valid measure to increase sales tax without any solid plan on what to use the money for. And for a portion of our community, those who can barely afford basic needs, this is just another straw. There's no compassion for our citizens. But our mayor is promoting this embarrassingly conspicuous expression of moral values, virtue signaling. Another empty act of public pandering. This is more lazy thinking, another broken promise, more lack of action, and the same city culture. Our mayor can say, "Oh, goodie, we did something." Saying you're compassionate doesn't make it so. Show us some real compassion. Stop this nonsense. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Arlene Jensen, please.
My name is Jensen. I'm the co-chair and the foreign manager at Sister Land Farms here in Port Angeles. I'm also the volunteer director of an educational nonprofit called the Dirt Society. I'm an advisor for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for Palm County. And I am currently serving on the board of directors for Port Angeles Farmers Market. Most recently, I got involved for the upper bound program at Pennsyl College. And this is the one-year anniversary of my moving to Port Angeles. I say all of that because I want to reiterate how important it is to have an active part in the future of your city. And I try to do that. In the last year, I've met dozens of really, really wonderful people. An alarming fraction of them have decided to move away. And I don't think that they're leaving because the mountains aren't beautiful, because they are. And I don't think they're leaving because the ocean isn't breathtaking, because it is. I think that they're leaving because they see no particularly interesting future here in Port Angeles. I think across the board, the friends of mine who are choosing to leave are leaving because they see no profound or inspired impetus to put down roots here. I'm just now beginning to understand my power as a citizen in this city. The more I learn about local business and ethics in our governance, the more I firmly believe that we're devoting entirely too much energy and time to maintaining a status quo that doesn't serve us. A status quo that's going to see us looking kind of pathetically into a state of inconsequential ity. I can see other towns of similar size and fortune in the United States taking really bold action, bold measures, to improve local economies, to improve cultural evolution. They don't see us doing that. The Compassion Charter should be a no-brainer. I'm a stalwart agnostic and even a moralistic detailitarian. I find nothing alarming, or divisive, or problematic in the revised language of the charter. The one thing that I do find problematic is this, is how long we spent bandying back and forth about whether or not we want to be oldly good. I think that to be one of the few who are arguing against the Compassion Charter would put you firmly on the wrong side of history. And that in this case, we might as well err on the side of compassion. So Sister Land Farms voted unanimously to support publicly the Compassion Charter. And we also voted unanimously, we're an LLC comprised of six legacy owners here in Port Angeles, to enact and adopt the Compassion Charter on our property. So either way, this goes tonight, I think we've won.
Thank you. Marilyn Ash.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Ash, and I live here in the city. Since I was here a couple of weeks ago, I have been privileged to go to training with the Port Angeles School District. And their focus for this year is equity. And underneath equity is compassion. A couple of weeks ago, I talked about policy systems and environment, and how organizations, government agencies, and other groups can use their policies, systems, and environment to create pro-social and kind of bold changes that Lauren just mentioned. So what they talked about is, and the whole school district is there, plus school districts from all over the peninsula, United Way, city council members, and some other groups within the city of Port Angeles. And what they talked about was to make a difference with children who have had some form of trauma and frankly, living in today's world and not knowing what the next emergency or disaster is, even if they have a pretty stable family, there's a lot going on that people are having to deal with. And what makes a difference in children's ability to navigate that and be resilient is one caring adult. And the more caring adults that they have, the more resilient they are. So when the presenter said, he didn't talk about licensed caring adults. It didn't matter if it was the custodian, the bus driver, the teacher, the school lunch person. And the school is setting the policy, we are focusing on equity. Equity means that you don't give the same thing to everybody. You actually look underneath to what the needs are. And to know those needs, you need to have enough compassion that you can actually find out what they are. And they're setting the policy, they're setting the systems by having trainings for their staff. And I hope that the city would do the same. It doesn't matter if the citizen feels listened to by somebody that is trimming the tree, or somebody who's the city clerk, or somebody that's the mayor. It all gets processed as that is what the city does, and that is how they interact with the citizen through here. So I really ask you to take some bold steps and do the no-brainer which Lauren mentioned, which is to adopt the charter as it is written now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Milgram, and I don't live in the city, but I have dropped in the center the answer for you. Okay, so I'm always bringing up issues. This issue is, we have a lot of drug addicts out there, and they cause a lot of trouble. And we put them into jail because they have a lot of issues. We'll put them into jail for two and three and four months. We get them set up to go to treatment, even for a year, and then we let them out on their own, and they just go get high, and they don't go to treatment. We need to figure out a plan on how to keep them in jail, or keep them somewhere till you put them in treatment. I had three of them this week. We're supposed to go to treatment, and they all went out and got high. So now the whole thing has to start over. You're just wasting money. Hey, garbage cans, please. Even if I give my clients bags to put their garbage in, there's no legal place for them to put it. There really isn't. And that garbage should, we should just pay for garbage. I mean, it's garbage. So last month, I was at the meeting, and somebody said something about the bathrooms should be open for tourists. That like should be discussed in April or something. I mean, tourists start coming early in the summer. So, and then we just need bathrooms anyhow. We need porta-potties. Come on, guys. Hep A is coming around, Hep B. We need to be cleaning it up. So we have a lot of businesses, or businesses that people with their cell phones need to charge their cell phones. So they used to go to the pier, those are shut down. They used to go to the Bell, those are shut down. Now they're going to churches and other places that have outlets. So maybe we can figure out how to just put a charging station. Doesn't have to be a plug-in for the radio, but just little phone plug-ins. Wouldn't hurt. I know people don't want to look at the whole list, but they need a place to charge their phones if they're going to get any communication, put some stuff. I think that would be really good. Numbers are up at Taffey. We have got at least 70 people every time we've been open, and that's like 20 more than normal. So I don't know what's coming down, but it doesn't look good. I've had four kids that are 15 years old hanging out. Parents are out there, don't know where the parents are. We had to get them some school clothes and school supplies. We need a better system to take care of these kids. They're gone. And that's not what I can do. That's not what I'm there for. So we need to get our heads together and get some real answers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, folks, that's everybody who signed up. Anybody else who would like to speak at this point, or anything?
Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I'm Hillary Powers, and I live in the city of Port Angeles. I have been on the steering committee with the Charter for Compassion since January of this year. Immediately, I jumped on board because I think it's a wonderful idea. I think what the Charter for Compassion does is it holds us accountable as individuals, not as city council members, not as city workers, not as an educator, not as farmer, but as a human. So when the city of Port Angeles signs on to something like this, it's also saying that we are challenging each other, and we're expecting the challenge to be more compassionate. I also think what it does is it puts us in a pool that's greater. It's a global initiative, so you have cities all over the world who have signed up for the charter. And what that does, that allows us as an individual, meet Hillary, to go and find someone in Texas or in Robertson, or some other county that's like here, and get resources like that. Whereas it might be harder if we weren't a part of this bigger global initiative. So I'm in support of this charter, and it's wonderful. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, y'all. I'm Bill Atkins, and I live, I'm a citizen of Port Angeles. And I want to comment on the parking issue that was brought up. There was an article in the New York Post about it. And I lived and owned property in areas where there's parking regulations, specifically X number of parking spots per bedroom. And I found that that's good policy. And the reasons are that A, it causes structures to go up, and so that you park underneath the structure itself. And that frees up green space. The other thing is that it gets cars off the street. And in some areas that I'm familiar with, the street parking has got so congested because they repealed the rules on onsite parking that nobody can find a place to park. And so they've had to issue parking permits for the people that live in these places. And that, now there's a problem for Mr. Smith, because now he's got to enforce those regulations. And so it's really just a nightmare. And I've actually seen, I don't know, most of each California, which of course is a crazy place, they say, except the median house price is like almost a million dollars. Well, this place on the street, we're parking. So it's a really bad idea to take away parking spaces from the requirement on the residents. And further, the drive-down strategy, if you believe in that analysis for climate change, is you want to get the cars off the street. You want to get rid of the cars and make cities more walkable and more bikeable. And it's going on all over the world, not so much in the U.S. because we've got this lower fare with our cars. And so I'm urging you to seriously consider the impact of eliminating that parking regulation. I think it's good policy. I think it's in every plan that's discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who would like to address?
A couple of us signed up after you took the paper. We're out there. I'm Ellen Fitchett, and I live in the city of Port Angeles, and I've lived here since 1992. Well, I'm in support of the Charter of Compassion and in us using creative thinking that honors who we are, meaning all of us here, as decisions are made going forward here in the city and county and nation. And what I really wanted to mention was my frustration, bewilderment, stress, sadness, and some anger, and feeling of betrayal about what happened with Veterans Park and the decision that somebody made without including what I thought was the original plan, which was to have people meeting together in an open way to design a safety net, perhaps. That would be my wish, but also something that we all could live with. So I felt stunned when I saw and realized that there was a gate and fence all around the Veterans Park, and that we had not heard about it. It just sort of sprang up. And at first, I thought that the, whatever the borders are, the protecting things out in front, I don't know, the construction things, when I went, "Hi," I thought, "Oh, they're fixing the sidewalk." And then I learned about a week or so later that, no, it was really a barrier to keep people away from a park. So I just wanted to say that transparency did not seem to be working. And I know that's an issue for many of us and many of you, to have transparency in the decisions that are made. And I think people were not honored who wanted to be a part of that process. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak?
My name is Michael Gonzalez. I'm with Invicta Solar Systems. I spoke here before. My company's registered here in Port Angeles and also the state. I'm coming back where Nicole was talking about, I have to back up at 5:00 real quickly. And go right to the Bills Exchange. Bills Exchange in California is very easy to use. I've used it all the time, used it for 27 years. I can see my blueprints, my specifications right there on the spot. Subcontractors can go in, they can bid on all jobs that they want to bid, all the general contractors they want to bid to. There's no restrictions, and that's how we do it. Because you need at least three bids, when GCs do any kind of a government project, especially projects that's preventing wages. And you are not allowed to go ahead and take preventing wages on the job site and disperse funds differently than what is specked out on the specification for the job site. That being said, this, right here in Port Angeles, we need a Bills Exchange. We need an exchange of plans here, a practice to pick the plans, and teach the people how to understand it. I don't know how many subcontractors here and contractors here that know what ICBOs are. A lot of people don't even know what that is, and that's part of the whole game. You need to know if you talk to them. You need to understand what the codes are. And as long as you understand how to bid a job, and those are the ones that are getting them. The ones that do not understand how to do a big job, fifty thousand square feet above, are not getting them because they don't have the capability to read the plans, let alone the specifications. People need to be taught, which is not a problem. I'm willing to teach people how to understand, how to go through specifications, read them, how to go through the plans. It's very easy. My solar system is the top-grade solar panel system in the world right now. And I'm trying to bring here to Port Angeles, and I have nothing but problems because of the net metering process that is stuck inside of the whole state. So with my company being a general contractor and other GCs out there, we're being stopped from doing jobs because of certain laws that are taking place, that people don't know about until I discuss it with them, that on March 30th, mostly on every March 30th, all their credits are zeroed out. So it's like putting money in the bank. And you need your interest, and if you don't get your interest back by the end of the year, it's gone. That's exactly what's going on. It's a fraud. And I sent a letter to the Attorney General regarding this. That is taking the money, that's stealing money from the people. We need people to make money off of the solar. They have a right to that money, and we have a right to put it into the grid. And PUD needs to start working with us to get this act together with Bonneville. It's a very hard process. I've already put this company together. I spent my life savings right now to get to this point. And I can't get a job set out here because of the net metering process and the way things are here in this area of the peninsula. If you go any other place in the state, you can find a Bills Exchange in Seattle, they have them, and other general contractors have them, GetInHouse. But if we get together and everybody starts working together like we should, we'd be able to go ahead and make this town a better town, and make this town where people want to come here and be here and stay here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, let's get the Palm Economic Development Corporation, Colleen McAllaire. So hello. I assume you have the slides in front of you in your packet? Are they all? Come on over here, and hopefully the slides will be up. That should be one and up there. Your presentation is on the left-hand side. Oh, great. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Karen St. James, the chair of the Palm County Economic Development Council. And we really appreciate being able to be here and have an opportunity to present our current status and what we are proposing for 2020. Now, the CCEDC is the state-designated economic development organization for the county. We've been in business for a number of years. We had our cycles of prosperity and then with the times, a little less prosperous. Something happened last March, March 2018, and that was the new tax laws that introduced opportunities on the CCEDC. Actually, has been managing that whole effort for the past 18 months without any help from financial pots anywhere. And we've done a really good job. We have a lot of interest and opportunity, clearly opportunity. So we became the poster child for opportunities zones in the United States. Everyone looked to us because we collaborated. They didn't understand that out here in the outback, we do have to sometimes collaborate because we don't have the volume to bring about changes all by ourselves, each and every one of us singly. So we do have to collaborate. And they looked at us and they said, "Well, you have two counties, you have four cities, you have two ports, you have five million cars." And at that time, when it started, we did have five million cars, but the Department of Commerce asked us to include Quinault, so now we have six million cars. So this was observed to be really unique in all the United States. And they keep pointing to us, and we got a good deal of press and glory for having done just what we normally do, which is to form partnerships. We've had a change of personnel with hiring Colleen McAllaire, and I think she's now head everyone here as our executive director. And we've really, really, really been pleased with Colleen's performance. And the new direction, or let's say the adjusted direction of our organization, has brought about a new mission statement. I believe you have a copy of it there as our mission here. I'll leave it anyway in the notes on the screen. We partner to make Palm County a great place for businesses to thrive and people to live. By working collaboratively, we catalyze business leadership, nonpartisan, I should repeat, nonpartisan problem-solving and data-driven strategies to get results for Palm County. So among the things that needs to happen, we believe, is training, workforce training is something that's high around us, creating jobs, because there are some people who are underemployed, unemployed, seasonally employed, or displaced. And so we are looking to continue to be partners with all the other economic development organizations in our county and the city as well, because that is, I believe, that we are narrowing some of the interests of the city of Port Angeles. And I would like to introduce you to Colleen McAllaire.
Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you, Carolyn. I appreciate it. So I'll go through these slides very quickly. I know we have very limited time, but I wanted to emphasize what a great board we really have. And I was not involved in selecting this group, so I take no credit. But we have 16 exceptional board members that I've really enjoyed working with and learning from, 74 profit businesses, I'll let you look at that list, two nonprofit executive directors, two board directors representing two of our five tribes, and five board directors representing special district governments. Very quickly, high level, we are working on five different areas in 2020. Of course, the Department of Commerce requires us to do business and retention and expansion visits for the contract that we have with them. And, but we really want to become the go-to source as this county's data providers. And I will, here's an example on the right-hand side of the slide here, a business resource guide that we've created that we are going to have throughout the county. Additionally, number three, as Carolyn brought up, Emerald Coast Opportunity Zone, technical assistance, and we will, we plan to be developing a prospectus for the two county-wide region. We are facilitating the North Olympic Legislative Alliance. And in 2020, we will be planning for 2021 to to generate funding to build two county platforms to aggregate Palm and Jefferson workforce training needs and solutions. So we want to be seen as the data provider for the county. And I've got quite a few slides here, but here's some examples. We have a unique resource, the Economic and Social Research Institute, that where we can provide very succinct information in all sorts of different categories to the county and to the city and to businesses that are looking to figure out where is their opportunity going forward. And so here's some quick examples. I don't know if you all use this regularly, but I think the Department of Revenue's site where they show by quarter the most recent data is Q1 from this year. But as you can see, in unincorporated Palm County, the total percentage of, and this is just retail sales, based on local sales tax, was almost thirty-six percent in unincorporated Palm County. Forks is about five. Port Angeles went down to twenty-eight point seven, Squim is up at almost thirty-one, so a two-point advantage over Port Angeles. And so for the total in the county, taxable retail sales was two-hundred-and-ninety-two million. I don't, I'm going to find out how is it that Forks went up almost eleven percent in that year-over-year first quarter. Here's other information that we can provide to your staff and to businesses in the community. But again, this is only based on retail sales. This is not wholesale, this is not V and O tax returns. But from the sales tax that the city of Port Angeles has received in the first quarter of 2019, almost forty-four percent of that came from retail trade, where new and used auto dealers, that represented seven point six percent of your total. So a really small piece there, you know, that's providing a lot of value to you. Again, highlight, construction is nine point four percent. And wholesale trade, where they are getting retail tax, that's almost eight. And accommodation and food services, fifteen point two, where restaurants are almost thirteen percent of that. And anyway, this is an example of the kind of reports that we at the E D C can offer your staff and the council as a whole when we have a report back to you on a quarterly basis if we move forward together. Here's some more examples of important and relevant information that we can provide based on lifetime. I'll go ahead and breeze through this. This is an example of home values. In Port Angeles versus Palm County, I think the takeaway of this is that hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-thousand-dollar range, there's a lot more in the city limits than there are in Palm County. I can compare this to the state or the nation. Again, a lot of different, a lot of different ways that we have the ability to display data. Per capita income that highlighted, the dots there represent in comparison to Palm County. So what are, what per capita income in your city compared to the rest of the county? And then also, city of Port Angeles, growth rate and families, households, population, that kind of thing. Another executive summary kind of information that we can provide due to, for time purposes. I'll go ahead and breeze through that. So we now operate the emeraldfund.org site, now where we are trying to connect opportunities where project owners, whether they be business owners or real estate owners, are looking for investors. On September sixteenth, we're meeting with many investors at an Opportunities Zone Summit that Congressman Kellner put together in Tacoma. And additionally, at Forterra, if you're familiar with that nonprofit out of Seattle, they're creating a rural qualified opportunity fund, social impact fund. So they're not looking for the ten, twelve percent return on investment. They're looking for a much lower return. This is not philanthropy, where they're just giving away the money. It's not charity. They want their return back, but they're fine with a much, much lower percentage. And so we want to ensure that these many millions that are being collected through this qualified opportunity fund, that are going to rural projects, that a lot of those millions come here to our community. That's, this kind of investment, the tipping point, where you have a project owner that can't quite make the numbers work, but if it's something that provides social impact, then suddenly, okay, now we can make this happen. I just spent over an hour in the home with Eric DuHart, and he's really interested in moving forward and getting some of this type of investment. So I know that kind of project is something that's really critical to the city. So in our scope of work in this space, we're working on a prospectus and technical assistance for the project owners. And we're helping them develop marketing packages. It's important that they're prepared to present to these sophisticated investors in a way that they expect with the internal rate of return, once the project is stabilized, how much money am I going to make? And some, again, some folks are fine with actually zero percent return after ten years. They just want their initial investment back if it is a project that this city or this county has said this is important to us. So we want to make sure that we take advantage of that, that we don't miss the vote on this. So that's something that the E D C is working really hard on. We are putting together some three classes with an attorney, Todd Feinstein, who's doing pro bono work for us. He's located here in Palm County. And he is a corporate attorney and has put together a lot of private management funds in the past. Though he is volunteering his time in doing pro bono work, and the E D C is bringing that to our community project owners, whether they be business or real estate. We consider this probably an eighteen-month project because it is a window that closes, it's not completely closed at the end of this year, but the value starts to decline for investors. Let's see. We, again, as our Chair Carolyn mentioned, we have been funding this entirely for the last fifteen months, and we've gotten national attention. And we are applying for grants. But we're doing that in partnership. Again, truly own our mission statement. The Sorenson Impact Foundation, that was led by the North Olympic Development Council and Team Jefferson and Palm County E D C are both partners in this, working with Jamestown Tribe, et cetera. And we really think we're going to be getting some of this funding, and it's very strong collaboration. We have been awarded ten thousand dollars from the Grant Fund, that's an organization out of Seattle, because of our collaboration and our collective work, doing things differently with our two-county region. And through this process, to create the prospectus, where we'll be hiring a consultant to pull all that together for us, legal, marketing, and financial analysis, that we're putting thirty thousand dollars of Palm County E D C's reserve funds into that, plus applying for grant funding. So here's an example of a prospectus. And we really learned how incredibly important this is after we met with Forterra. And also, as our Chair Carolyn mentioned, that we've been getting a lot of national attention in this area. The President's, President Trump's cabinet members make up the Council of Opportunity and Revitalization. And the Executive Director of that organization came to little Palm County and visited with tribal members. And your city manager was there and heard about the opportunities that we have here, what we're trying to do, and what some barriers are that we're facing. And what he loud and clear said is, where's your two-county prospectus? Where is it? You don't have it yet. You need to get that done if you want these investments. And there's a lot of federal funding also coming in because the feds are requiring that all these different grant programs from all these different agencies now are giving priority to those applications that are coming from opportunity zones. So if it's an application that exists in one of Palm's opportunity zones, it's getting, it's either targeted or it's getting preferential points. So I just want to make sure that we are all over that and taking advantage of these opportunities. Very quickly, this prospectus is a marketing strategy. It's an economic development policy brief. And we are going to be using the resources that other people have already put together, the SED's document for the two-county region, the P A Housing Study, the Chamber Survey results, et cetera, and it's a private investment memorandum. Let's see, key elements, this is kind of a list. It's there in your packet if you want to look through it. I won't go into that in too much detail. But just now, we are moving as aggressively and collaboratively as we can. We worked this weekend on a grant application, got it out to First Federal Community Foundation in time, Sunday by midnight. And we're continuing to do this kind of work to support our counties collectively. So our Vice Chair, Brian Garrett, who is, will be speaking to you about our North Olympic Legislative Alliance work.
Great, thank you, Colleen. As you can see, we've been busy on this Emerald Coast Opportunity Zone. It is a very unique opportunity. But Colleen asked me to talk about NOLA. Some of you are aware of NOLA. It's the North Olympic Legislative Alliance. Many of you are aware of what we did last year, or actually eighteen months ago. What you might not be aware of is that NOLA-type of organization has been in other communities and very, very successfully. So, and I was familiar with one. I put one together, I hate to say, thirty-five years ago. I know that's shocking. I wrote on, I'm sixteen. But thirty-five years ago, and right now, it's more than crippled in size. And it has become a very, very dominant force in that community, legislating and working with the legislators for things that are county-wide process. And it is a nonpartisan, I want to stress, nonpartisan, that looks at the holistic county needs and focuses on those areas that are most important to the county, whether it's healthcare, education, or whatever it is. So that's what we're going to be doing, and we're going to re-energize NOLA, getting it back together again, working closely with our legislators. Who, by the way, all are very, very supportive of this effort. I want to thank you for your time, and I hope you'll support our efforts to be energetic. Thank you.
Sorry, I got a couple more. So how can we do this? We're moving a lot of our funding to contractor-based. And we have, to support the lobbyists, to, we intend to hire some sector experts and also communication specialists. And if you look at other E D Cs around the state, it looks like they have a whole lot of employees. But in reality, the majority of those entities are on the chain. And so we want to do the same thing so that we can deliver more. We haven't identified what specters those sector leads will be experts in. We're considering who they are, but also it's going to be up to the two boards of Palm and Jefferson County E D Cs. And because we have created a memorandum of understanding for the two E D Cs to work together to hire these folks, the consultants, the sector experts, the lobbyists, and the communication specialists. So our request to the city of Port Angeles, and I want to start with, I recognize the funding environment you live in today. I also wear the hat as a Port Angeles Commissioner. We've got similar issues going on. But to me, this is an investment in your own community, in your own county. And I believe that this investment will leverage, if we do it well, it will, will be of the leverage of this investment so that it comes back in real estate projects that you'll be receiving permitting fees in, that it will change the community. And again, we're not, what we're trying to do is help our existing citizenry and business owners in Palm County. So we're trying to raise some additional dollars so we can fund these folks. And I think there will be a lot of value coming forward in the next few years, especially if we're able to hire these professional experts to help us in specific ways where, that we need to address. So are there any questions? Have we went over my question?
I'm not like stacking the deck or anything for you, Colleen, but I would like maybe a little bit more explanation about the lobbyist part because we found that if you're not in Olympia every day, you're not in Olympia. And the city of Squim recently was a beneficiary of lobbyists. And if you would kind of just explain why it's necessary for us, the E D C, to provide that service to cities that don't have it. I think that's an important feature that the E D C is going to offer.
I think you're absolutely right. So the, our three legislators represent three of one-hundred-and-forty-seven legislators. And the process, if we talk to our legislators about something and they truly believe in it, that's step one of eighty-two. You have to go through numerous committees. And if that committee chair doesn't support the idea that you're proposing or doesn't understand it, and you haven't met with them multiple times to explain it, it's not even going to get a hearing. So, because your elected official may not sit on their chair. And it has to go through all these processes, rules. If it's funding, it has to go through Ways and Means or the Operational Budget, whatever is appropriate. And then if it passes on the floor there, it starts over on the other side. And you have to go through that exact same process to begin. It is so difficult to get anything passed. But it is possible if you have someone there on the ground that's advocating through your means. A little bit about NOLA that I want to share is that this is, if there's one entity out there that says, no, I'm not in support of that, that idea does not go forward. It has got to be consensus-based. And then the top three to five ideas get bubbled to the top, where everybody votes on their priorities. And I would anticipate that the city of Port Angeles, we will have maybe ten slots for voting from the city of Port Angeles. But we're also going to have business, nonprofit, et cetera. And we're really going to try to have geographic equity as well so that there is a transparent process that everybody can believe in that, okay, maybe my idea didn't get to bubble up to the top this year, but, you know, I saw that these other things are really critical and they made it. So if we are able to create the top three to five for Palm County, and Jefferson County will do the same in a parallel effort, and then the lobbyists will be working on both of those lists, I think we have a much greater chance of making impact. I, as an aside, from 2015 to 2018, I ran the Washington Business Alliance, and I had four lobbyists working for me. And if you're not there all the time, and there are so many people you have to talk to, it's not going to happen. And what we also found is that sometimes legislators will say, okay, yeah, that's great. Here's the bill I wrote. But they're not spending any political capital on it because they know it would be too hard for them as an individual to push that all the way to the finish line. But the other flip side that they shared is that this is so important to us because we get so much pressure from leadership of our caucus. And, you know, and things like, if you don't vote for this, you won't be on that committee next year. You won't have a committee chairmanship next year. Or your funding for your legislative business may be reduced. I mean, so they have a lot of control on these legislators. But if the legislator is able to say, well, look, this is what my constituents said is critical, and that is, you know, not in compliance with that, I'm worried about this, then they, they're protected. That that is something that they can go to their leadership with and say, you know, I can't vote for this, and this is why, and you need to understand that. And that works really well for them. Additionally, Walla Walla, Wenatchee, you name all sorts of rural communities across the state, they all have lobbyists there in Olympia. And they're getting a lot of money from the capital budget, operating budget. They're able to lobby for policy changes. And I was shocked being there, not with the lobbyists, but advocating, and I had lobbyists there that were working for me. Palm and Jefferson County was like crickets. I mean, we all had our I mean, we all had our, Washington Public Ports Authority is the Association for Ports. Yes, they were there, but if you think about it, who are the big boys funding those? And so are they really advocating for what's maybe important for Port Angeles and Clough County, but not important for others? It's not going to bubble up to the top of their list. They're going to work on the bigger things that affect all cities. So anyway, that's, yeah, I think it's critically important to have lobbyists, and we are creating a very bright line. For me, as to facilitate this process, I'm going to be a secretary. I'm not leaving anything. It is going to be the NOLA steering committee and the people that sit on the committees. And the EDC board is funding this and helping create the steering committee, but this is a broad-based community effort. And additionally, the ports, you know, this, they have their lobbyists, they make a lot of money from the sixty thousand dollars annually they spend with their lobbyists. And, but that will be very separate from the process that we follow.
Any other questions? Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
All right, so let's get to our public hearing, the electric cost of service analysis methodology.
Good evening, members. Tonight, we have the Forty Quarter Consortium, the electric cost of service analysis methodology.
Where's the mule?
This is really the last step in a process that started back in February for the council staff and the advisory committee to go through each of the utilities and their costs associated to determine methodology for setting rates. Up to this point, all utilities have a methodology approved, except for electric, and so that's the last step they're asking for tonight. This electric cost of service methodology was presented to the utility advisory committee on August thirteenth, and it came to that meeting as favorable recommendation when passed on to council by that committee. There was also a council session on August twenty-seventh to go over this methodology as well. And so tonight, we have Mary Sue French, who's the cost and capital account with the C, here to present a high-level overview of that methodology. And as I said, I will turn the table with Mary Sue.
Good evening. I would like to thank you for your attendance at all of the trainings that we had and the work session that we had, and the various COSA models that we've launched through. Tonight, we'll do a brief review of our work session last Tuesday, where we concentrated on the understanding of the inputs, definitions, and drivers of the electric costs to allocate to the different electric really categories. So as we went over, the first part of any COSA is the rate-setting principles. And first off, the customer requirements. We need to provide rate stability to the customer. We need to be just, reasonable, fair, and equitable, and not unduly discriminatory or preferential. We need to be competitive and affordable, be easy to understand. And the financial principles, we need to meet the revenue requirements. We have to, we have to take enough revenue to pay all those bills. We need to provide revenue stability to the utility, and it needs to be easy to administer. And of course, we want to conform to generally accepted rate-setting techniques, and be cost-based, and encourage economic development and conservation. So last week at our work session, we did talk about an overview of the chart of how our infrastructure is. So want to talk about the fact that the Bonneville Power Bill is sixty-seven percent of the total cost of our electric utility. And that there is the industrial transmission customer, they do own their own poles, lines, transformers, and meters, so therefore their bill is handled differently because they don't have the shared portion of the city-owned poles, lines, underground transformers, and meters. So we go from Bonneville Power, we have our seven substations, we go through all that infrastructure with all those people, the twenty-one point four full-time equivalent in the staff, and dividing it up between our residential customers, our commercial customers, and our commercial demand customers. These numbers over here are just showing the split, which is the fact that eighty-four percent of the costs are fixed in this utility. So if we look at this, we have to start with our inputs, which is our rate revenue, which has to cover our costs less our non-rate revenue. And we do have a small amount of non-rate revenue, it's the electric that comes in for the electric permits, any interest we have, service and hookup fees, the sales scrap and junk, construction contributions, pole contract rentals. So there's various amounts of small revenues that come in, and we reduce our costs by those first, and then we divide that up. So then we have the costs, and we split those costs up into five categories, customer, energy, demand, distribution, and other. And those distribution costs are further broken down between the lines that carry the power, the substations, the meters, transformers, services. And, and the reason the streetlights is on here is because we break all of those costs up separately so that we can totally allocate the cost to streetlights that need to be allocated because they are handled by the street department, and we have to get that cost up for sure. So then we have all of the costs, and as I mentioned, we have the BPA and a small amount of power that we buy from the PUD, and that's our biggest amount, the cost, and eighty-four percent of that cost is fixed. There is a small amount of the BPA bill that is variable, and the rates do vary by month for that bill. Then we, the next is we have the labor, which is those twenty-one point four full-time equivalents. Then we have some administrative costs, capital, financial expenses, the repairs and maintenance, the transformers, poles, lines, anything we take out of inventory, and our contractual services. The conservation incentives is in this budget, and then operating supplies, and a little bit of interdepartmental transfers. So the total budget of costs is just under twenty-five million for this utility. Then we have to look at the different customer classes or categories, we can call them that, that they have. So in total, we have ten thousand five hundred ninety-two individual customers that we send bills to, and two hundred and fifty-two million kilowatt-hours that we bill up. So we have our residential with our different discount classes, our general service, we have general service demand, nonprofit, we do charge the water department for pumping their water, the electricity to do that, and then the primary service, which is some major, major users of power. Last week, we went over all of the individual details and all the definitions behind all of these allocators, but basically those, those categories that we talked about, where we have to take all those costs and break them up so that we can divide them among all of these classes appropriately. And so it gets down to the percentages to take the dollars. Lastly, we have that twenty-five million dollars, so we're going to take that purchase power bill, we're going to subtract off the cost to the industrial transmission customer, because that's billed separately, and we need to get it out of this calculation so that it can just, this calculation can deal with the rest of the classes. And then we have all the other costs, and then we're going to take off the non-rate revenues, and so there's twenty point two million dollars for the costs that we have to divide up, so that the rates can pay for those costs. And then this last chart is just the, taking those costs and breaking them down into the major classes. There's some smaller classes, and the discounts for the residential, I just put at the bottom of the column, so you can see that the total residential cost is ten point six million. And there's about four thousand dollars of smaller, little thirty-five dollars here, and so I just put those at the bottom. So, this gets down to, what does this mean? Now, this is only done on the two thousand nineteen budget basis. This is not going to be the cost that will present it to the UAC first, and then to the city council for approval for the building cost. This is just meant to be for demonstration of showing how the COSA model would take those costs. The two thousand nineteen costs were basically based on the COSAs that were done back in two thousand nine and two thousand eleven, and then every year after that, they were just increased for percentages. So this effort is the effort that we were tasked with doing to tell you what it really does cost by the different categories. So this is what we have that everybody's being billed on right now. This is the COSA. But it's important to note that the variable portion is going down and the base is going up. And so I know that you've asked to see an example of what that would mean. So what we're going to do is we're going to take the PA budget, which is the current cost right now, this column, and we're going to look at what the COSA would say it would be, and then we're going to compare that to if you lived in Clough County PUD or if you lived in Jefferson PUD. We showed this city of Ellensburg here for reference, but for ease in examples, I just stuck to the top four. So, shall Alicia explain to you that the average residential customer uses eighteen thousand kilowatt-hours a year? That's fifteen hundred kilowatt-hours a month. So if they do, their current bill on a month, if it was at fifteen hundred kilowatt-hours, is a hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-five cents for the electric portion. On the new rates, that would actually be a hundred and thirty-two twenty-five. The, if we have a general service customer, this would be some of the businesses downstairs, downtown, some of the smaller restaurants. They use around eight thousand kilowatt-hours a month, so their current bill is six thirty-seven oh four, it comes down to five forty-nine seventy-five. Then we have the phase three, theirs is coming down a little as well, but then we have the general service demand, customers' demand, phase one and phase three, and those bills are going up slightly. The primary bill, I mean, this is the bills I didn't, you know, put examples in there of that. There's only eight primary customers. So what this says is that some go up and some come down. And it's all based on the variable that you have in there.
And just to explain it further, our residential bill, the more energy they're using typically, the more their bill will go down, based on the COSA model versus the twenty nineteen?
Well...
Or, I mean, not, not exactly.
Not exactly, because you're going to get to a point where, yeah, it's going to go up.
Well, like, the average customer is three thousand. If they, if we're looking at a customer that has three thousand that kilowatt-hour bill, they would be doing better.
Well, I have to, I have to run it through the model, because they did take it, and nine hundred and ninety kilowatt-hours is where the two bills, old system and new system, exactly match within pennies.
But, but generally, my logic is, by reducing the per-kilowatt-hour energy rate, that means that...
Yes.
The higher users typically are getting, now, the higher users are also getting a bigger bill in general, because they're using more energy.
Correct.
But the higher base rate gives them a better deal on that energy.
Well, it's, the higher base rate is what the cost of service analysis said, we actually, it's the fixed portion of our bill, which is eighty-four percent of all of our costs. So, you can't just look at, yes, what you're saying is most likely true, but yes, their bill's just going to get bigger because they're going to use more. I mean, in comparison to the other rates, it could be a little bit less. But you can't just look at base and base and think your bill is going to go up, and that's what this was pointing out, is that it's very possible that your bill goes down depending on what class you're in. We still want to do a little bit more modeling, and we want to model at least five to ten customers in each of the classes to make sure that there's nothing that...
And then, so I, I brought that, what you just said, the more modeling, to make sure that we don't have impacts that we don't fully understand. And then I want to communicate that, that right now, all we're talking about is methodology, not setting rates.
Correct. That's, all we're talking about is the fact that we've gone through and we've taken these costs apart, and we've looked at the poles that service the residences, which are shorter poles, and the poles that service the industries and the businesses, which are taller poles, and they cost more. And the poles down where you drive that are quieter less poles because they're exposed to the, the sea air. And so we've looked at all those costs, the bigger transformers for the industries, the smaller transformers for the residences, and how do those costs divide up to get the cost to the right categories? And that's what this methodology did.
A lot of work put into this, and we're all playing up, tying into something. My, I jumped out of the, which obviously is the increase in the base rate, almost doubling, and actually basically going up approximately five percent. And so we talked about, we're trying to provide rate stability, we're looking at affordability, and, and I just, I'll just make it difficult to understand almost doubling the base rate, because when we're using our heat and we've had some cold winters, some families really keep the heat down to a minimum or even off in order to control the bill, and increasing the base rate, base rate takes away some of those opportunities for us to control our power and utility bill. So it's a big jump, and so that's what's called here.
I agree a little bit with Sherry here. So potentially, if I'm looking at this, a single person that is trying to conserve electricity, and that could be from an environmental standpoint, or a lot of times from a financial standpoint, their rate could potentially go up. I guess my, my point to the citizens out there is look at your bill, I guess, and see where you're going to be at. How reasonable is nine hundred ninety-two kilowatt-hours? I don't know. I guess I need to look at my own bill also. I know what the bottom line should averagely say. So I guess folks need to kind of see where they're at, and come back and tell us what you think.
I, I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about base rates, and I think it's a concern for everyone. I also think it's important to remember that this is just the methodology, so the final model may not look quite the same. And I think it's important to acknowledge that in our work sessions and other times, we've talked about the assumptions that are going into these models and how we might affect those moving forward. And acknowledging the incredible amount of work that it went into getting us to real costs, not like real assumptions made by people who are actually working here, and I think that's a really good first step, and I think the conversation isn't over. And certainly, as we pointed out, there will be models... Let's look at what this really looks like for, for real customers before we actually do the rate setting. And accepting the, the model and the assumptions that it's working under doesn't mean that we're setting the rate, just regenerating what council member French said.
So I just looked at my bills for, since coming thirteen, and the highest monthly bill is nine hundred and sixty-five, so I don't like the model. So I don't like the model. But, you know, we, we made the intentional decision the first summer in 2013 when we were in that house, that, you know, we're not going to go through a winter with these four heaters and no insulation floor. So that was an intentional decision. Get insulation around that house, and put in that heat well, put in the limited as well. And, you know, that's partly what contributed to, you know, being below average with the rates, and that's just the highest bill. I do think that this model's an improvement on the old one, and for that reason, I find it supportive. But I don't think it's the end-all, the end-all with where we want to be on the models. In terms of council participation, I don't remember us talking about who the classes are and how we're going to create the assumptions that go into the model. And that's a sort of policy-level decision that I think the council should be involved with. We've basically been given these models, certain customer classes, and, you know, playing around with the numbers and the assumptions in them, but never looking at the big picture of how the model is built. The other thing going into this model, recognizing that it is moving more toward, okay, what are the fixed costs? And those are going to be base rate. And then what are the variable costs? And those are going to be variable rate. And then realizing that most of the cost are fixed costs, and therefore the base rate doubles, is how, how are we actually dividing that base rate up among different classes of customers? We put all the residential customers in one class, which means that, you know, if, if an apartment building, battery unit is metered, and they're all paying a separate base rate, even though they have one pool sitting outside the apartment building, they're paying the same as all other residences. If somebody at the end of a long drive, and there are some places in Fort Angeles within the city where, you know, it's like, wow, that's a really long drive by, they're paying the same base rate for all that extra infrastructure you get there. So I would like us to see in the future, I'm not holding up this process, but something more looking at, as I think Sherry mentioned, a risk-per-mile methodology, or a density or concentration of infrastructure in the model, so that we can understand how much people are actually paying for it in the specific place where they are. I do have strong concerns about how this model de-emphasizes your ability to control your rates if you're below the average and if you're below that 900-something kilowatt-hour use per bill. But I think we can address that in other ways. And so I hope that there's a commitment among council and among staff to work on furthering our conservation efforts, that it's not, you know, what we're doing now is not enough. And we should be specifically targeting our customers who are, you know, paying absorbent amounts in the winter, because either they're not aware of, or haven't been able to use, like lower thermalization programs that we have in the city. You know, we know who they are. We have all their bills. We know them. So like, let's, let's figure out who these people are. I remember doorbelling in 2017 and knocking on a door. I was late in the, in the, in the campaign, and the elderly woman who lived there said, "Yeah, I haven't turned my heat on yet, because I know as soon as I do, my bill will go up to $400 a month, and I have $800 a month in income that's fixed." And, you know, so that means half of my, half of my monthly income is going to an utility bill. So she's someone else in the council intentionally not turning her heat on. I don't know what she's going to, presume she's running to baseball or something. We have solutions to that. Why haven't we altered?
And I would like to chime in again a little bit on that same point, but with a different twist on that, instead of the risk-per-mile, which is really important. And also, you know, we talk about that we want to be equitable and fair to the customer. And because we do have different customers in that residential pool, some, you know, a big house versus a small apartment, are we being fair and equitable to both of those types of different residences? And so I agree that ton of work has gone into this. I like it. I think it's, it's good, but it's, it's not perfect. And I would like the next iteration to make sure it, it becomes fair and equitable to the housing types. So, but with that being said, why don't we read the resolution, and we'll open it for public hearing. So a resolution of the City of Port, the City Council for the City of Port Angeles, Washington, approving a cost of service analysis methodology for electric utility rates as presented at the Utility Advisory Committee on August 13th, 2019, and on September 3rd, council meeting for use in calculating considering electrical, electric utility rates for 2020. So we will open this for public hearing. So anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this, please come, say your name, where do you live in the city, and give us your comments regarding the utility.
Catherine O'Keeley-Rose, I'm a resident of Fort Angeles. And actually, I concur very much with what you just said, Sissy. Each residence is a different size, and I think this, that is not equitable, that a very large home versus an apartment can be setting the same base rate. And I think by having all of the costs absorbed in the base rate is actually discouraging any kind of conservation, because I personally do try very hard to be conservative in my use of our resources. That's my comment. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a former Myer citizen of Fort Angeles. I too just want to echo that. It seems like the increased base rate, not adjusting the kilowatt-hour price, that is subsidizing people to waste more energy. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to comment on the methodology? All right, I guess seeing none, we will close that, this public hearing. And the council, I guess they need to make a decision here.
I hope that we approve the resolution. That's read.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and a second, and further discussion.
Yeah, so I would just like to point out, one of, you know, some of the slides that we saw, one of the first ones was about the principles that we use to set these rates and have these methodologies. And I agree completely about the conservation incentive. You know, we actually live in an area, the power that we get from Bonneville is actually fairly carbon-free. It's, you know, mostly hydro, and so it's fairly clean. It has its own problems, but, you know, we're not, we're not burning coal to provide electricity, so we're not having a lot of environmental externalities. But we still want to provide economic incentives for our citizens to conserve, so they can lower their utility bills. And we have a lot of citizens who are struggling paying utility bills. We have a lot of people that are cost-burdened through rent, and when you add their rent, which is already really high based on our market conditions, plus their utility bill, they're paying upwards of 50% of their income on, you know, which is excessively cost-burdened. The, you know, we want to be, they're spending 30 or 35% per world. They're spending 50 to 60% or more of their income on rentals utilities. And so that really does hit home to me. And that's one of our principles at the very bottom. It says we should encourage conservation. The thing that it's fighting is the financial principles of needing revenue requirements so the City of Port Angeles can deliver these services without going bankrupt, so that we provide, you know, revenue stability to that utility, so that when the transformer blows, we have the funding in our reserves available to repair it. The thing that I would say is in our next steps, providing to have rate stability to the customer, which is one of our other principles, is going to be a challenge in this. So I support this cost of services assessment methodology, but I think that's something we're going to have to think through, of how do we make sure that our customers get rate stability as we implement rates later?
Anybody else want to comment? All right, seeing none. We, like I said, we've got a motion on the, on the table to pass the resolution as read.
Can I jump in? Sorry. So we make a really strong, and staff would make a stronger, and I think Councilmember French just, just made it as well, that, you know, if the use, or if more of the rate is in usage and not in base, then there's more variability. And, you know, we as a city aren't going to be able to predict what our revenue is going to be. I kind of don't buy that. And I'm looking for people to push back against it, but, I mean, I think what Bonneville's done is basically said, you know, we're going to look at how much you use and charge you for that. I mean, there's only a certain amount that you can vary your utility bill, you know, for a conservation basis. And, you know, sure, there's maybe some initial adjustments, and people say, oh, you know, okay, if I install this new amount of UIC that the city gave me, I'm going to save savings. But we can still predict that. I mean, that's just predictive analysis. So I, I don't see a lot of merit in that argument as a reason for giving a base rate. The, the better argument to me is that more of the cost is fixed, and therefore we're going to put it in the base. But that's still a choice, and that's still a policy choice that we're making as a council. So, you know, if we really think that that's a serious issue, then let's adjust it. And we can do that, and we can have everything else that the model gives us without, you know, doubling the base rate and having people say, "WTF?"
Anybody else who'd like to comment? Well, I will, and I agree with you that this is a methodology to get us through the numbers, and then we get to decide really whether we accept the numbers as they are and/or modify by policy what is read. So...
So I appreciate Lindsay's counter argument, mostly because a lot of times, you know, we see, this is a methodology, as our mayor said, to get us, that gives us numbers. And then we as politicians see the numbers, and we say, we don't like those numbers. Therefore, now we're going to attack the methodology. So we agreed with the methodology before we saw the numbers. And then we see the numbers, and we're like, ooh, those numbers scare me. So Lindsay's not making that argument. He's saying, no, there's a flaw in methodology between, you know, how we allocate our fixed costs and our variable costs. And I would say that the only caveat I have to that is really when we talk about our fixed cost in this utility, we're talking about two things. We're talking about, number one, the cost for us to provide infrastructure, which is that, you know, if the transformer blows, do we have the revenue? And by the way, I would also say that that's a policy decision we made as a council to, you know, to actualize those future costs in a dollar-per-dollar rate basis. We've said that we should account for those costs on a dollar-per-dollar basis. We made that decision to lower the risk to our electric utility. We can, we don't have to do that. The second part of fixed costs is the Bonneville fixed costs. We, you know, Bonneville is the elephant in the room, telling us what we kind of have to charge. And we, you know, unfortunately, don't have a lot of power to push back as a single entity. So that's the other part of the fixed cost, is the Bonneville costs. So, yes, I understand, but, and I would say that I personally would be okay with our electric utility having some more risk. I don't think we need to have, you know, as little risk as this COSA model necessarily is saying. But it's also a utility that can't just have a bunch of risk. You know, we have to, the, the whole point of the cost of service analysis is to say, what are the costs to provide the services? That doesn't really account for a lot of risk. Does that make sense?
Can I ask a point of clarification, which is the Bonneville fixed cost, 16 million, is that for electricity, and they're going to charge us the same amount no matter how much we use? Or is that for physical infrastructure, like pools and transformers and stuff?
That is just for the electricity. So of that 16 million, the percentage of that that is fixed is, you know, just under 14 million of it. 84% of that is fixed. And that's, but Bonneville changed their methodology in 2011. We all signed, you know, the city signed the contract for that, for that, you know, they did it for everybody. They didn't just change it for us. They, they changed it across the system. It used to be rollercoaster rates changed every month, and there was a lot of variability. So they spread their whole infrastructure out over all of their customers. And they look at how much we use as a portion of that and say, this is, this is your portion of that, which is a little over 1% of the whole region. It's a tiny amount.
So just my clarification, when we see up there a fixed variable next to Bonneville, and it's 84% fixed and 15% variable, oh, there's a decimal, sorry, all of that is still the power. And so Bonneville's made a calculation ahead of time based on how much we as an entire community use, and are predicted to use, thank you, and then says, we're going to definitely bill you this much, and maybe if you, you know, bill a little bit more or less, there's 15% built in there. But based on how much you historically used, we're going to bill you for your power consumption. And that's the fixed cost that we're now putting into the base rate instead of in the variable rate. Is that accurate?
Yes, but we do get a credit if we do use less. There is, there are, depending on when we use it, the time of use, the month of use, there are credits that do come back to us intrusos that happen in October of every year. And we do have the opportunity, every May, they ask us how much we think we're going to use over the next 12 months. So they do actually get input from us on our usage.
Sherry?
I call a question.
All right. Anybody have a question? Okay. So we have all...
Are you ready to call the session?
I call the question in eight seconds.
Second.
All right, so we've got a motion on the table and a second to call the question. So all those who do recall the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, the ayes have it, so we will call the question. So the, we have a motion on the table to pass the resolution, the electric utility cost of service analysis as the, as read, and a second to that. All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilmember Sharon Martin opposed. And I wasn't going to oppose, but apparently we can't talk non-things.
All right, so it passes 16 to one. All right, so, so this completes that. So we are going to move on to the presentation, for the paramedicine presentation by our financial...
Thank you. Aye. During, um, back in November, I came to the council and gave a brief overview on our proposed community paramedicine program for my whistle. And so what I wanted to do now is just give you a brief update on where we are and where we come. In the last council package, there was a new report that was included. If you didn't have an opportunity to read that, I want to kind of give a real basic idea of what we're on. So the primary goal of community paramedicine was to provide an increased level of health care in the community. There are unfortunately a large number of people who, for whatever reason, tend to fall through the cracks. You would think that, you know, in 2019, we would have a great robust system, but the reality is that there are a lot of people out there who literally do not have access to healthcare, do not know how to gain access to healthcare, but once they've gained access, don't get the healthcare that they necessarily need. So what we wanted to do is provide a way to help with that. And the primary objectives of doing this were to try to keep people out of the emergency room. Providing care in the emergency room is extraordinarily expensive. Three nights in a hospital equates to, it's just amazing how much it costs. And every person kept out of the emergency room saves the community when they save the hospital, when they save something like that. So that was number one. We want to prevent hospital re-admissions. Hospitals don't like it when people come back. So if you go into the hospital for some sort of a procedure, you want to be released, and they want you to stay home where you're going to get better. And if a person gets released after a procedure and then comes back in the emergency room a day or two, a two-day surgery because their wounds are weakening, or because they're not feeling well, something like that, that's not a good thing. Chronic disease management, there are tons of people out there that have COPD, have congestive heart failure, have diabetes, have all sorts of long-term chronic health problems, and having ongoing care for those diseases. Again, it can keep people out of the doctor's office, keep them out of the ER. We want to be able to connect patients to services. So there are tons of services out there that patients aren't aware of. There are people out there who don't know that there are places where they need to help. There are folks like Amy out there, I think Amy, who do that, they connect people to the places where they need to be. And in doing that, everybody saves money. And in doing that, everybody saves money and overall health of the community goes up. And selfishly, we wanted to reduce the number of 911 utilizations out there. The reality is, is that when people don't know what else to do, they call 911. And we want to try to reduce that. So the community paramedic program was initiated in order to do all of these things. And we were doing it not by ourselves, but also with a number of community partners. So we're working with the National Health Network, the Medical Center, NCSA, every health, the lower, Calum Tribe, Jameson, Calum Tribe, and the cops through Amy. Again, thanks. I never liked giving the titties to the cops, but sometimes you just got to do it. And this time they came through. And so we're working with them. The last thing, you know, we don't want people to end up in the back of the ambulance. We don't want people to end up in the back of the police car. We don't want people to end up in jail. We don't want people to end up in the emergency room. We want people to get care in appropriate ways. So how do we do that this way? And we did that this year with a firefighter paramedic who's already signed with the department. We basically had one firefighter paramedic who took off shift. And so he was not working the traditional three-four-hour shift schedule. Quick, man, take eight hour, forty hour a week, eight hour a day, forty hour a week schedule. We did that for the first year of the program just to see if it would work. And what can that paramedic do? Well, that paramedic can do things in the field that even an armed man can't do necessarily. They can administer medications, they can obviously do vital signs. They can do general health assessments, people that are out in the field. So, you know, you have someone at home who's in Canada, someone who's just, you know, any number of different places where they can just do basic health assessments. They can do something called medication isolation, which is near the mean, which is kind of interesting when you think about it. A lot of times what happens, we all think that if you go to the emergency department, you know, you give them all this information, that they plug all that information to the computer and then they know everything they need to know about you. That's not necessarily the case. In fact, what's actually happening a lot of the time, you go to the emergency department, the emergency room physician sees you at that point in time and they may give you medications if you need to deal with the acute reason that you're in the emergency room at that time. You go home, you start taking those meds and you find out that those meds are not compatible with the ones that your family doctors didn't prescribe to you for long term. So sometimes medication like isolation from a paramedic will go into your home, go look at a shoebox full of medications you've got, and they'll say, "Don't take this one with that one." It's a pretty important thing. Paramedics also could, and be able to go into some small place and give them medications. And the best they may do, again, like Amy, is that they refer them to assistance where they need assistance. So how do we get any patients, how does this happen? Three primary ways we're doing this is through direct 911 response. So when someone calls 911, the towman's off in the fire station, the dispatcher will come over the radio and say, "Potential is fire. Respond to such and such an address." And you're going to deal with a person who is, they've fallen off the ladder, they have chest pain, whatever. Sometimes those 911 calls can be something as basic as they call 911 because they stubbed their toe four days ago and it still hurts. Well, believe it or not, that type of thing is something that someone will call 911. Or the community paramedic can listen to that call and say, "Wow, the person stubbed their toe four days ago. I can probably go and take care of that." They can go in a small vehicle, no problem, take care of it. If that community paramedic wasn't there, we would have to send a medic unit with two paramedics on board and takes them out of service for a period of time and takes them to deal with the pressure of the toe. Whereas somebody across the street or across the city may be having a heart attack. Not the best use of utilizing, best utilization of service and resources. Partner agency referrals. We get a lot of referrals from like North Olympic Health Network, from the Olympic Medical Center, NHS Behavioral Health. So NHS Behavioral Health, for example, they might have a patient who needs a medication that's served once a month to keep him fine straight. And if they don't get that medication once a month, then they kind of go off the rails. They may end up in the back of a police car, they may end up in the back of a med unit, they may end up in the ED. If the community paramedic knows that the person has their meds coming back, NHS Behavioral Health can get them saying, "Hey, come in, we'll give them medication that the person's house will give to them." Everybody's happy. And the last and probably the most important way that this is happening is from shift referrals. Ships go out, we run fifteen times a day on calls. The guys go out, they start getting used to seeing the same people over and over again. These same people are people who would fall into the cracks if they don't have a primary care provider. They don't know what else to do other than call 911. They connect the community paramedic to those folks and then the calls to 911 go down. And this is where I'm going to show you how that happens. So we have six months of data. We've seen way over this, but at that time, seventy-eight patients. Of those seventy-eight patients, we noticed a fifty-nine percent decrease in EMS calls. Fifty-nine percent, that's an amazing number. If you think about it, you might have Mrs. Smith, who for whatever reason was calling 911 fourteen, fifteen times a month, maybe sometimes a hundred times a year. We connected with the, with the community paramedic, it drops to zero. It's amazing. The results have been amazing. We've seen a huge decrease in repeat calls to EMS. And we've seen a sixty-eight percent decrease in emergency department. Sixty-eight percent. Every time someone walks through the door of the emergency department, it costs somewhere starting at about seven hundred and fifty dollars, up, way up, hugely up, astronomically up, but starting at seven fifty, plus all the time and energy it takes to do that. We've seen a sixty-eight percent decrease. For us, every time we drive out the door, it costs us two thousand dollars. And that's just the basic mechanics. You talk about the setting of rates for utility. We do the same thing with all of our costs, our equipment costs. Costs us two thousand, actually, two thousand and two dollars every time we drive out the door. If we could increase that by fifty-nine percent, that's an incredible number. So we found here today, although we cannot say for exact causal, we really want to talk statistics. There's no single exact causal relationship between the decreases and the fact that these people were seen by the community paramedic. We can infer it, but we can't actually say that's the case. So we just said fifty percent. This is a pretty minimal number. But we said fifty percent, just looking at fifty percent of the decrease, we've saved ninety-five thousand dollars in the first six months of the program. That's a fifty percent. You can tell that easily, we could get up hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings. So we're really pretty happy with the fact that things seem to be going very well. So right now, what we're doing is we're looking at funding for 2020. I'm not a great salesman. I'm horrible at asking for money. But what I'm doing right now is kind of beating the wish of our community partners and asking for help. When we're saving money, we're saving them money as well. And so what we're looking for is for the folks to make the investments to try to help us to continue on into 2020. So that's what I spend majority of my time in right now. We're also looking at grants. There are lots of grants out there. It's just tough writing and I do it, it's just takes, it's just a long work. So that's where we're at. I just want to let you know that's where we're at. We're very happy with where we're at. And we expect and we really hope that the program can continue into 2020. So any questions? Please remember that I am absolutely closely in stone depth.
Sherri.
I just really thank you for that exemplary report. We know and we have seen in, for the past many years, the increase in calls. 911 calls to the emergency room and many have been minor. But you don't know until you get there, actually. And it's such a, we've had exponentially increasing calls to the fire department and over and over and over. And this is so successful. I absolutely applaud you. And of course, the fire department's always done a good job, but this is amazing. Thank you.
Thanks. It's been very successful. And, you know, one of the things, it's, I'm extremely impressed by this. I think that you've easily shown that this program, you know, sustains itself, not necessarily by saving money for itself, but for the community at large. And I think that's, you know, when you talked about your kind of goals with the program, it was emergency diversion, preventing hospital readmissions, chronic disease management, connecting patient services, reducing 911 utilization responses. And then you showed how with this decrease, even if we just take half of it as credit, we've saved almost a hundred thousand dollars in our costs. But we've also saved the hospital an amazing amount of cost. Because when we divert people away from their emergency room, in a lot of those cases, they're not really going to get fully recompensated for those services. They might be uncompensated care. They might be Medicaid patients that where they're getting fairly small reimbursement rates. If you're preventing readmissions, in a lot of cases, thanks to the Affordable Care Act, they get penalized when patients do re-admitted, when they're being compensated by Medicare, Medicaid. And so if we're preventing readmissions by reducing, you know, these needs, we're saving the hospital money. If, you know, if we're reducing 911 utilization, as we showed that we did in a huge percentage of these cases, we're saving potentially the sheriff's officer, the jail costs, you know, as well as our police department. So I, I think that ideally, this would be an easy case to make. I know that it's going to be more complicated than that because it's hard to convince other agencies that they should pay for services that we're providing. But I really think that just the numbers that we've seen, and we have in our reports some case studies that were high, in my opinion, extremely convincing. I think that the, the need is out there and we've scratched the surface of what we can do by investing in upstream diversions and in prevention. So thank you for your work. And thank you to the actual community paramedic, I think Dan Montana, is that his name? I think our actual community paramedic, Dan, is that his name?
Yeah.
Incredible work, as well as Amy Miller's work with them. So great work by everyone involved.
Yeah, we, we really like how we have the right person in the right place at the right time to work with the normal person. And it's great. I don't want to think that or give the impression that the community partners aren't helping. They definitely are and they definitely know the need to. It's just another kind of pitting people down and things like this kind of things. Then on hand, I pop her. So one of the things we did talk about was about the future and we talked about possibly... So we had a kid at the time who's really interested in the program. This is him. But he's grown up now and he has since lost interest and wants to be an astronaut. So not much I can do.
All right, council. We are going to take up the compassion charter at this point. We're going to have to take a break. So... So there is the charter that was in your packet soon. And I know we've talked about compassion and we've had a presentation. So how would council want to move on?
I move to adopt the charter of compassion for Corian Angeles. Second.
All right. So we have a motion on the table and a second. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Sherri?
Well, I've read the Senate is lovely and I'm glad that business has adopted. And I know there's some groups that adopted and individuals. And I hope that, that we can serve as examples personally. As an elected official, I don't believe that I, that government should be telling people how to think and act. I think our fiduciary responsibility is to provide safety and efficient utilities affordable for the community. I like this. I will take it home and I will share it. And thank you for having the opportunity for me to read this.
Any comments?
Well, we start this meeting with the pledge of allegiance. And we ask everyone in the audience to do that too, although they're not required to. I think that's telling people what values we have. You know, I think we have a statement about our city purpose and what values that expresses. You know, that's in our comprehensive plan. So to say that our, our job as elected officials is not to talk about values is like we're missing really the point of what it means to be a leader in this community or in any, in any community. You know, I, I've seen in the last year and a half or so, out in the city council, that the leverage that I'm able to make is not so much in, in changing policy, but more in being able to sit at a table where people listen. And the things that we say matter in this community. So to say it's not our, it's not our role to talk about what values matter in this community is, is not the right way to go. So in terms of the charter of compassion, you know, we, we heard during public comment, and I was at that presentation as well, by Dr. Jeffrey, Dr. Mandrake, who's the school district fraud, to speak to all the school staff about the importance of hope, the importance of young people having hope in their lives. So knowing that the school district is pushing in that direction makes me say this is the time for us as a city to say, "Yeah, I'm with you." You know, we've got other groups in the community. There's the Calum Resilience Project that United Way is hosting and sponsoring. And we're encouraging all of our organizations, I sent this email to all the directors out there, to take part in a, in a multi-stage workshop process about trauma recovery care and resiliency, which is along the same lines as what this is talking about here. I do think it's important to remember the first comment we had in this meeting today from Mrs. Smith, who said, you know, basically walk or talk. That, you know, we as a city, whether it's the council, whether it's the staff, whether it's, you know, somebody out on the street who's, you know, doing utility work, but, you know, that's their job, but yet they're there in the community as a representative of Corian Angeles. We need to actually walk or talk and not just ask this. So, you know, what does that mean on the ground? I think the example that Chief Dubu just provided is an example of that. The conversation was about how do we save money? But if you go beyond that, in those statistics of people's lives and somebody who is living with a chronic infection and has trouble getting to the hospital, why are they ultimately going to the ER with a chronic infection? That shouldn't be happening, right? The quality of their life is so much better by having the paramedic program there for them. Like they're, they're... So that's beyond there. So I think the compassion charter is a reminder for us, both in the council, both in staff and in the community as a whole, to not just look at the numbers, but to look at people's individual lives and say, "What do we care about? What matters to us in this community?" So the paramedic program, just to kind of duck each other's things together a little bit more, is one of those examples of when we plan ahead and do prevention, when we go upstream, we create better outcomes for people. And as government, we kind of create smaller government in a way, spending less money, right? In, in that big sense, you know, we don't have to raise taxes to cover the money. We want to raise utility rates to pay for more, more cost of Bonneville. But, sorry, we need to bring that issue back up. But, but so, you know, where else are we doing that? I think I'll echo Mary Smith again. And, you know, the way that we're treating homelessness and people experiencing homelessness in this community is not in line with this charter of compassion. So if we adopt this, I think we need to walk or talk. And we need to recognize, again, going back to the paramedic, that policies that go upstream are way more cost-effective and dramatically improve people's lives. So that's why in housing policies, it's like a no-brainer about housing first. I know there's still occasional debate. But with the Housing First policy, we're talking about saying, "We're going to provide more upstream just like providing paramedic over in people's houses." And that's going to reduce costs later on. And that's been shown over and over again in studies, just like we just saw with our small example, something different providing medicine. But, you know, how are we going to do that? So I'll talk a little bit more about some other communities in my council report. But I'm thankful for everybody speaking out in favor of this. And I hope that this is not just the end of the process, but the beginning of the process. Thank you.
If this has done something, it's caused me to spend a lot of thought on this piece of paper. Does signing this make one more compassionate or more compassionate? People go out and get a marriage license, yet divorce is a fifty percent. So what holds that accountable? I agree with most of what Lindsey says. And if we don't sign this, is the community paramedic, is that going to go away? paramedic, is that going to go away? Is that going to disappear? If we don't sign this, are people going to go around treating people worse? Are they going to treat people better if we sign this? Are we holding ourselves accountable by signing this? Is this a role of government? And it's, it has eaten at me for weeks since this was actually introduced. And it is, the only thing in the end that comes to me from this is being aware of it. As far as signing it, and do I think there's a certain group out there that's going to stop treating the homeless a certain way? Is there a group out there that's going to stop bullying kids at school? Maybe. I don't know if the evidence is there to prove that. So with that said, I will, I will thank Sissy for that. You drive a truck all day for 12 hours or whatever, you've got to occupy your time or something. And I can, I can assure you, there's days go by that I realize I never even turned the radio on, so.
I think as a, as a council, as people who've been elected to be leaders in our community, this is a valuable step for us to take. Whether our signing this means we're dictating how people in Port Angeles treat each other, I think is a question for another day potentially, but I think as leaders, it's us saying, this is something that's important to us, this is how we are going to approach policies going forward, and we've said we're going to, so remind us if we're not. I think that's really important. And I do think for people in the schools, for young people, for even my own kids, to go home and say, hey, this is something that I agreed to tonight, speaks volumes to a lot of people, and maybe it will make some people stop and think, particularly because we're clearly not the only ones doing it. And I, I think we would be wise to join the, the growing number of cities around the world in saying that we think this is a really important value. So I'll be supporting that.
Okay, so I just want to start, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but we as a council, I think, really have a duty to move this off our agenda. We have, the citizens have come to us and, and come to repeated council meetings, which I credit them for, you know, and they have told us what they think and been extremely articulate and moving in a lot of those statements. And, you know, I, so I think it's up to us at this point to just make a decision. That's just one. I really was moved by what Lindsay said just a minute ago. I think that one of the good, you know, I was not even content at Port Angeles School District training, I really wanted to, but I had some conversations with people that weren't there, and I, you know, read a little bit about what was, you know, how it was. I think there was good reporting done about it. I was, I'm really impressed by the leadership that Superintendent Brewer has, has given us in this regard, the school board. I, I think they've done a great job in saying that equity matters and that we're going to focus on it, because I think that that is a, you know, I, I really appreciated the public comment that talks about how compassion underlies equity. And, and so I, I think that those are values that are really important in our community to build community, to remind us that we are all here trying to do the same thing, to raise families and to prosper and to, you know, enjoy the region that we live in. So, you know, in, in that regard, I really agree that this should be a no-brainer. But at the same time, I think we should always go back to the document. We are talking about an actual document that has actual words, and we should read them and like, and really understand what the words are saying that we're pledging to do, because it is not, the document is not telling, is not telling our citizens what to do. It is us stating our values and saying that we will, we will agree to do. By affirming this Charter of Compassion, we agree to use compassion awareness as we update, create, and sustain policies and activities. That is what we do as a legislative body. We create and sustain policies. And so we're saying, we are going to use compassion awareness as we do that. I think that that is a absolutely legitimate thing for a government body to, to affirm. We resolve to embrace compassion as a key value and support the exploration and development of policies and activities that integrate compassion into the daily lives of our community. You know, we, I, I am a, I believe in government. I believe government can do good things to make the lives of its citizens better. That's why I'm here. So we as a government act the daily as we're citizens. Every day, we deliver services to them. We, you know, set up a, a market so that they can, you know, make products and deliver them and, and buy things and prosper. So I, I think that using compassion as a key value as we develop these policies that are a part of their daily lives is extremely important. And the last thing I'd say is, in, in a lot of ways, what we're doing is affirming what a lot of our city government already has written into its policies. Our police department, you know, as was presented in the presentation at our last council meeting, their, I believe it's their mission statement is, in partnership with our community, the Port Angeles Police Department recognizes this mission to serve in a compassionate, courteous, and professional manner to promote freedom and peace of mind for our neighborhoods and safety of our families. So, you know, we're affirming what we already believe in our vision and mission statements. I think that's a good thing. And I think that on a basic level, affirming this does not mean that our staff won't be able to do their jobs. Our police department has, I think, a really great mission statement that includes compassion. They still retain the ability to arrest people using physical force if that's necessary. And I think they can do that in a compassionate way. I, I don't think that violates their ability to do their job. I don't think, you know, if someone comes to the planning desk and doesn't have the appropriate materials to get a building permit, we don't have to say, oh, compassion requires us to give them a building permit. We can still say, no, you may not have a building permit, you need to follow these steps. So, you know, I, I think that we can still do our job, we can still run a city, and we can promise to use compassion when we create policies. And I think that Lindsay pointed that out really well, that now it's our turn to walk the walk and not just talk the talk. So we have work to do. That work is still going to involve a lot of discussion, a lot of deliberation, and I appreciate that. And I really think that now's the time to move this off our agenda and to move on to other business. So I, I will approve this, I will go against you for this motion.
Any other comments? So I will chime in on this one, because I, I do appreciate the first speaker about accountability, and this is one of the reasons that I do. I, I hope all of you will hold us accountable to make sure that we treat everybody with compassion, that we listen. I think listening is one of the biggest key issues to try to understand somebody else and where they're coming from and be able to act with compassion towards that person. And I guess that doesn't mean we're not going to do our jobs, it doesn't mean that we're not going to say no, but we can do it with compassion. We can try to be able to get into other people's shoes. And if it does get people to read it, hopefully the paper publishes and people can read it and actually think it through, then, then I'm glad that that job gets done. But one of the things I was thinking about as you were speaking is that we had talked about putting our mission and values up in a poster. I would like to see if we can get the Compassion Charter out here so that as folks come in and out, they can read it, you know, and it becomes part of the city. So with that, I think there's no more further comments. So we have a motion on the table and a second to sign the Charter of Compassion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
No.
So we have one now. And do we have, I guess that's six yes? Can I see?
Just ask for it.
Okay, so let's see, a hand count for all those who favor the motion, raise your hand. All right, so we definitely, six, six guesses and one no. Thank you all, and with that, we are going to take a five-minute break. Go. Yeah. All right, so I think at this point, we can get back on to the regular agenda. So folks in the audience, we're going to get started again.
I'm having such a good time.
Hello. Thank you. All right, so we are going to begin by the late item, so.
Madam Mayor, Council, we do have one late item this evening. We'd like to add stage three water shortage declaration to other considerations.
All right, is there any? Okay, so we will add that. So let me read the consent agenda, because look next. The City Council minutes for August 20, 2019, an expenditure report for August 20, 2019 through August 23, 2019, in the amount of $1,645,823.66.
Move to approve.
I, I personally have to pull the minutes, sorry. I want to pull the minutes.
Oh, okay. So then we'll just be extended to report.
Move to approve the expenditure report. Second.
All right, so we've got a motion on the table and a second. Any discussion? All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any questions?
So I move to approve the minutes with the following three copy of the changes. First, with the late items, it was the three opposed to the motion on the table, Brooke French, Sherman Morgan, Moran Meredith, and Kit. And then with regard to the four higher licensing code, I believe that we passed the ordinance with the changes suggested by the, and so the minutes, let's say, adopt the ordinance as read is a little ambiguous, so I just want to make sure that the minutes reflect that we adopted it with the suggestions made by the. And then the third amendment is that under the 2019 power line treaty term, the motion says X dash X instead of the final vote, which I think was seven zero, but not a motion.
Right, I believe that was yes.
Changes are amended, thank you, Councilmember.
Okay.
Second. Do you have a second?
Yes, so now we have a motion, passive, and a second. Any further discussion?
It would be six though, because I wasn't here.
All right, so we have, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We are on to the City Council minutes, that means City Council meetings on election night.
Madam Mayor, Council, last year in November, City Council requested and directed staff to actually bring forward ordinance that moves the City Council meeting to be held during election night, the next, next available Wednesday. We have drafted a ordinance for council consideration this evening, which would implement that modification to ensure we don't have a council meeting this upcoming November on election night, and we'd be happy to answer any questions relative to that ordinance.
All right, Council, any questions?
This is a long time coming. We just, we really need to know what's happening on election night, so thank you for this.
All right, in that case, I will read the ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then in Chapter 14.40 of the Port Angeles Minnesota Code.
So I move to adopt an ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, and then in Chapter 2.04.010 regarding the City Council meetings of Port Angeles, Minnesota.
Second.
Would you amend that to waive the first reading? Hand waive the first reading.
Second.
Forgive my interruption, I was, I think we're wanting to waive the second reading.
Okay.
There you go.
Wait, wait.
All right, so we have. We have another break.
That was a laugh, period. That's the, yeah.
I would second the motion to change the ordinance and also the amendment to waive the second reading.
Okay. That's it.
Everyone in the audience thinks that we're not supposed to.
All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second to pass that this, think to have our meeting not happen on election. So, any further discussion? All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. So on to the use of sales tax funds for affordable housing.
It's wonderful, please, did we skip G1? Or did I miss that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So G1, we're going to go ahead and do, do a G1, have a whole parking discussion, so we kind of do all the parking discussion at once, rather than do some discussion, it's not going to do somewhere discussion.
I don't have a problem with that, I just missed that.
Yes, no, sorry, it was, I should have mentioned it. Okay, so use of sales tax funds.
So Madam Mayor, Council, this evening, we have presented to Council a memorandum outlining the specific uses available under House Bill 1406, as well as specific uses available under the qualifying tax for House Bill 1406. As Council has already acted, Council has placed on the November ballot, a sales tax measure that is dedicated to affordable housing. In your memorandum, you have a list of details which the state allows for the city to contribute those funds towards affordable housing. This evening, staff has recommended very specific uses, and I think that's important, that we're bringing back to Council some specific uses for both this 1406 segment of the funding, as well as for the sales tax portion of the funding, the non-sales tax credit portion of the funding. For the House Bill 1406 segment, we've conservatively estimated approximately $55,000 in revenues for that portion, and staff is recommending that that go towards assistance with rental. And we think that's really important based on the housing needs assessment and what we've heard relative to rental rates in the community. That's a really important measure. Relative to the sales tax qualifying portion of the tax, which is currently on the ballot, that would be utilized for proposals associated with private development, government development, nonprofit development for the new construction of affordable housing, the rehabilitation of existing housing stock, existing housing stock or buildings relative to affordable housing, and then also for the construction of infrastructure in conjunction with that affordable housing. So tonight, I want to pass along the opportunity to Attorney Glor, as well as Director Brecky and Director Carazozza, if they might want to add additional information relative to the memorandum that's been presented to you tonight.
Well, just a little bit of an explanation that, as Nathan said, you've already done everything that you need to do to get this on the ballot, and so it will be going to the voters on November 5. The, the thought behind the resolution tonight is that it is more likely that the voters will approve the ballot measure if they know what you're going to do with the money. The reason that we went to some detail in the memorandum to explain what the state law allows is to those, not that you need to know those in detail, you just need to know the state law allows a wide use of that money. And so you could be spending it on a lot of different things. If you don't tell the voters what you're going to spend it on, they're going to, so this is just me being a little bit cynical, they're going to assume that you're going to use it for the wrong things in their mind. But if you tell them what you're going to use it for, they may not like it, some of them may not like it, but at least they'll know. And the others who, who do know, may like it, so that they'll pass it. It's exactly the same thought that we, we offered when we did the transportation benefit district, when we went to the voters with the transportation benefit district, we had 10 projects. He said, this, if you approve this, this is how the city is going to spend the money. Same theory here. Now, in the resolution, with the staff has suggested some items that you might want to consider designated to spend money up here. You don't have to follow us, you make the, you make the rules. You have a wide, a big. Now, in the resolution, with the staff has suggested some items that you might want to consider designated to spend money up here. You don't have to follow us. You make the rules. You have a wide, a big range of possible uses of the money. You can pick out what you want to spend the money on. All we're doing is we're giving you a vehicle where you can tell voters this is how we're going to spend the money. So we're giving you that resolution form before you can do that. You can choose whatever you want.
Alright. Yeah, two seconds. Did you want to pipe in or are you done? Alright, Council, so we have a resolution in front of us. Any discussion?
I hadn't thought of rental assistance, but... Because I had only been thinking of building new housing, so I do think more housing is the ultimate answer to the problem. And I think, I'm kind of compelled by the idea of rental assistance for a short-term solution, because it's going to take a little while to build stuff. And sometimes the leap of... You can afford the rent, but you can't afford to get into the rental. And so I kind of, I appreciate that as a suggestion.
Couple of things that I think are... Madam President, I discussed this, are a little confusing. First of all, I want to point out that if we use any of this tax money, any of it, credit-wise or sales tax revenue, and we as a city use it for construction, renovation, all the things that are listed on this 82.14.530, we are going to be subject to prevailing wage laws and other administrative expenses. I caution the council and the city staff about projecting the fact that we're going to use this money for that type of... And I know they're trying to focus in on using it for rental fund and so forth. But, and also I caution against us picking and choosing right now because that gives the appearance of us taking it aside. And that's really not, I don't think it's appropriate now because, first of all, the ballot hasn't come out yet. And so I prefer not to take a side until the actual ballot and the pro and con sides come out. So I just want you to be careful about picking things tonight for us to spend the money on. Second of all, if we do pick, if we do follow 82.14.530, there's an excellent possibility that the amount of money that we get will greatly be diminished in availability by the overhead that this type of thing is going to generate, e.g., prevailing wage and so forth. So again, I had a question on page H3 and then I can read H4. That paragraph states, "Further recommends that the city should not commit, construct affordable housing yet or facilitate that support affordable housing and should not operate, manage affordable housing or facilitate or facilities that support affordable housing." Are we... Is that enough arms-length distance to the actual project to make the administrative overhead not go, no pun intended, to the roof? So, I don't know. Time is... Deal with it, will you? So, but again, all seriousness aside, I'm really concerned about whether we have an arms-length. I had the MRSC do a study on this. There is some, and Ms. Blor, with all deference to you, I would like maybe a further explanation on why you feel this is enough arms-length to prevent the diminishing or dilution of the funds that would come to us if this measure passes through excessive overhead. That's about basically it.
It may be helpful to talk about these separately because they are two distinct revenue sources. And so in that sense, it makes sense to talk about them together and talk about them separately, but I would like to talk about what Councilmember Moran brought up. And to me, the text of the resolution addresses that because it says the city will use the funds from RCW 82.14.530 only to fund proposals from other private developers, governments, or nonprofits, and then describes the kind of affordable housing projects that could go. So it's not us, it's other governments or nonprofits or developers. I think one of the challenges in public perception here is people say, "Well, wait, so the city's going to pass on this taxpayer money to a private developer?" And that's one of the optics that I think is very challenging with this. The issue becomes, as Councilmember Moran said, that if we do the housing ourselves, it basically costs twice as much as if the private sector does it. So our role is not to... Not to plant the seeds and grow them and nurture them, but to make sure that the soil has the right conditions and there's enough rainfall, that like the habitat is right for people to be able to do these things. For, you know, the plants to grow, or in this case, for more smaller affordable housing units to be built in the city. So that means that we're basically using this fund to facilitate improving our housing situation as a community, not to become a housing agency ourselves because we have other housing agencies in the community. They know what they do and they do it well. And we want to be able to support them, and this is the mechanism to do that.
Sure.
So I think that it's essential that we do tell our citizens with a transparent intent what we would do if this bill, if this measure, ballot measure passed. And so I really, I appreciate what the staff did because I do agree that, you know, if I was a citizen out there and my government asked me to pay more taxes and just within, with a promise, that's a hard, that's a hard thing to handle. And, you know, if our city did pass the Transportation Benefit District, sales tax increase, we made the case. We said, "Our street conditions are poor. Here's why, and here's what we would do with it." And then I get to drive on a new 10th Street every day. And it's, you know, I get to ride my bike on it in bike lanes. It's, you know, when my kids are going to school, it's much safer. So, you know, in that effort, the city was transparent and said, "This is what we would do. This is the issue. And, you know, you as a citizen then get to decide, does this merit an additional tax or not? And we don't have to take a position on that. You know, it's not proper for the city staff to say, 'You should go.'" Yes, they didn't. They just said, "Here's the situation. Here's what we could do." And the citizens get to decide. That's democracy at its finest, I think. And so I think that... I think that this is a good resolution, and I would support it. I think that, you know, one of the issues that we're seeing is the rental market is just not functioning as a proper inclusive market. And we've seen an increase in demand and not an increase in supply. And so we need to find ways to, you know, get affordable housing built. I think we need to find ways to get market housing built too, market rate housing. That's outside the issue, but I think that we should be talking about a lot of different things when it comes to that, not just this one ballot measure. We should also be talking about bringing the cost of development down to the city limits, finding ways that we can control those costs because I don't think it's necessarily a given that the costs are prohibitive. I think some of those costs are ours. And we can find ways to get the engines of industry moving to bring those costs down, both through government action and through actions like this that will stimulate other developments. So I think that, you know, what we're trying to do is bring the rent down. We can do that, I think, really smartly in two ways, by helping people that qualify for rental assistance and by helping to build new construction of affordable housing. I think that it's a really, Lindsey mentioned this point. It's a really good point that we do not want to duplicate the efforts of the working nonprofits in our area. And the last sentence of the memo was, "To implement any of the foregoing, the city may adjourn local agreements with another local government to support a nonprofit or quality governmental entity that provides affordable housing as described above." This is something that was a direct recommendation from the Association of Washington Cities. They said, "When you're looking at these kind of either ballot measures or specifically, I think they were talking about the House Bill 1406 Sales Tax Credit, talk to your housing authority. That's the first place you should go." And I think that that's a reasonable thing. We have a housing authority that did try to build a fort, that did actually build affordable housing units in our city. They're beautiful units. Some of us, I think, went to their rooted cuttings and got to tour them. They did a great job. Their price per square unit was really high. Getting it to pencil out took a long time. This money could help other projects pencil out. That's the goal. A separate issue is finding ways to get that price per square foot down. And that's something that I know the county is an active partner in trying to figure that out. We've had discussions on that. But I really think that it's the right thing to do. Tell our citizens to describe the problem, which we've tried to do, I've tried to do very much. And then to provide a solution, a potential solution, which we've put on the ballot. And then to explain what we would do to, you know, actually solve the problem if that potential solution was passed. And then the citizens decide, and I think that that's a fair and just way to do things. So I think, again, this is great staff work. I think that separating the funds is smart, you know. Putting my, you know, my personal hat on, like, when I started this process, I wanted to see all the money going to building housing, building housing, building housing. I want to swim as far upstream as I can to fix problems. I wanted to be as productive as I can in my mind. The basic problem is we're not building housing, and this is a problem that is a national problem that's been happening for decades, and it's not a new thing. Having said that, I think that there are good reasons to separate the funds just for reporting apartments and other things. And so I think that this was a creative way to use the 1406 money, which is not a very large part of money to me.
So Council, I've got a couple of suggestions because one of the things that Don and me, like I said, we don't want to duplicate the work that others are doing. And rental assistance is one of them. And then I was thinking, wow, if the city's doing that, what staff member's going to do that? What staff member program has time and space to do that, right? Even though that we collect the information from the electoral. So I was just thinking, if we could make, if we change things. So for that Section 1, where it says revenue from HB 1406 will be used only, used only for grants to nonprofit slash public housing for rental assistance or rehabilitation and, you know... So I don't think, I want unlimited only to the rental assistance because if a nonprofit or public housing entity who currently does the rental assistance, if they have a better, you know, project that may yield more, I think I'd like that flexibility in there. So that is my first idea of potentially having a modification there. The second one is some of the wording because it says, "The city will use the funds from RCW 82.14.530 only to..." And it says, "Fund proposals from." And instead of saying, "Fund proposals from," I'd like to just change the word to "assist" other private developers, governments, and the private... So it sounds like we're going to fund these proposals. We may fund part of them. We may fund a little bit. And we are actually assisting in the, this thing's happening. We're not, we're not, I guess this wording led me to think, "Well, now it sounds like we're constructing, but we're funding." But anyway, so that's the reason I would like to just clear that wording to maybe just change it to "assist." Other, if that's, or unless anybody else wants to come with a better language. But, so those could be the two. But I definitely don't want to duplicate having us be the rental assistance people to give those funds out. Because I think, like I said, we already have an entity that does it, and I think that they already have all the infrastructure in place for that.
I just have a quick comment on your rental assistance piece. I would guess that managing a grant program would be as staff-intensive as administering it. But the other thing is that the footnote on that is both state and federal law define rental assistance to mean providing rent, security deposits, or utility payment assistance to tenants. And that's something that we already have a system in place for. So that may be, I don't know that that's what staff was intending, but I see some hands up there.
So Madam Mayor and Council, I'd be happy to speak to that. I think as far as the assistant, assist piece as opposed to fund full proposals, I think assist might be a little bit more appropriate and accurate as to what our capability will be with those funds at the end of the day. Relative to the incentive or the assistance relative to rent, that is something that it was our priority in that we ensure, one, that we're not competing with any other entity out there. That is not the desire to duplicate jobs. And I think that's been really important as we put this memorandum together. But as Deputy Mayor Dexter mentioned, we do feel we already are administering utility accounts. And we do have low-income individuals who receive discounts on their utilities. And we administer those accounts with that recognition. And we feel it would not be a significant new workload to do the same. I think one of the additional potential concerns there is that other entities may expect an administrative charge to come in the direction of the city relative to administration of rental assistance. And that's something that with only $55,000 dedicated to that line item, we're not sure we could afford to take an additional administrative cost. So at this point, the city would intend to potentially do that through the utility account customer service process that we already have in existence. However, we're certainly open with additional discussions or solutions with other entities already performing that function.
So on the rental assistance part, I think that, you know, the, I think, the housing authority manages the rental assistance voucher that's often called Section 8. Those, you know, there's a huge demand. There's a lot of people who can be qualified for those. And not everyone gets housed with a voucher. So there's a large amount of people that meet those income requirements that if they get the voucher and they get housed with it, then their rent is limited to 30%, right, of their income. And that, then, you know, they're safe, right? They can make that work. There's a lot of people that are in that same income position that are on the waiting list or down, you know, that haven't been able to be housed with a voucher. And so there's significant populations and need that we can influence without replacing the program or something like that, the program that the Minnesota 230s do. That's my thought on the rental assistance vouchers. And I think that, as Nathan said, we already basically have infrastructure in place as far as staff to administer.
So I'm not a fan of the rental assistance use for this fund. I don't think it gets us upstream. Because, you know, I guess two years ago, I went to a presentation at the Homesense Task Force by Ted Keller, the policy won guy with Department of Commerce for housing. And he basically summarized the problem as there's not enough small housing units. And as a result, the cost of rent is too high because supply and demand, and also because incomes, particularly for poorer people, have not kept up with the cost of rent. So all that, I mean, we can draw models, how it all fits together. But basically, there's not enough small housing units. When we do rental assistance, we are basically, you know, putting our fingers in the dike and then what? Right? Like, it's not a solution. The solution is, well, we're going to artificially raise certain people's income with taxpayer money. I don't see where that heads. Alternatively, given the size of this fund, so we're talking $55,000, assuming the sales tax passes, half out of the dozen, maybe I have those numbers wrong. And that's for 20 years. That's substantial over that 20-year period, but it's not a lot in any particular year. I would like us to look at how to put that money into preserving the housing stock. So, you know, Councilmember French is right, like, we need more housing units. But as our housing needs consultants pointed out, the most cost-effective thing you can do is to preserve your existing housing units rather than try to build new ones. So, you know, when people are on low income and potentially fixed income, trying to age in place, they often defer maintenance on buildings such that when that person passes away, their housing unit effectively passes away too. And that means that we lose housing stock. So with a fund that's, you know, between $25,000 and $55,000 a year, we could create a revolving loan fund that people who need new roofs could come to the city and we would pay for the new roof and then put a lien on their property so that when it passes through their estate, we get paid back after 20 years of getting this House Bill 1406 money from the state. We would then be getting some more of that money back from those initial loans, you know, ideally next year or the following year if we're willing to accept. And we'd be able to have a program that would keep going in perpetuity. And we'd be preserving houses that would otherwise go into disrepair. And, you know, that's going to do a lot more in the long run in terms of keeping existing housing stock than rental assistance. One of the things, and I'm not saying rental assistance isn't a need. I mean, go to the Housing Resource Center and go, I mean, there's just, it's ridiculous. And even when you get your $200 voucher, like, what good does it do you, right? Like, you can't afford the money anyway. So, you know, even with the voucher. So, yeah, we're going to be helping in that, but we're still going down the drain because we're not creating more housing units or at least preserving what we have. So I would rather see us use these funds to go upstream. Also, I think for the voters, and I'll be very clear though, this is not really approved. This is something that the state's approved and we've said, yes, please give us the free money. Although if the voters approve the sales tax this November, then the state will double the free money. So it is, in a way, voter-approved. I do think it would mean a lot more if we're not just giving it away, if we're doing it in a way that it would come back to the city and create a long-term sustainable program. So I would much prefer to have Section 1 say something like, revenue from House Bill 1406 will be used only to establish a revolving loan program to rehabilitate affordable housing. And that is one of the a lot of uses under that bill.
And can you add to creating a loan sustainable, whatever you say? Because that was really good. That's created an important.
I really like that idea.
Anybody else have comments?
Well, somebody's saying only. Instead of helping out with stormwater costs or permitting costs and build new.
No, 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 he's talking about the first one. So the first one right now says only to establish rental assistance. So he's talking about that same one saying only to establish revolving. The other one is flexible. Page H5. Section 1, first line. Anybody else have a comment?
Madam Mayor, if I can speak to the change. And I think what I'd like to build on is perhaps Councilmember Schwimmer Warren's suggestion that the 1406 segment of it does not have to be done immediately. It's not ultimately what's being put on the ballot for a vote. What I would rather see happen so that staff can come prepared to think about the alternative for 1406 is probably strike that first section of Section 1. An attorney of law might, might have an alternative suggestion to that. But striking that first section or first sentence of Section 1 would simply leave us with what we need for the ballot measure. And I think that would be really helpful. But I definitely think it'd be nice for staff to have additional discussions about the administration of a revolving loan program. Because that's a very different operational issue that we need to look at as well as how does that relate to our existing housing rehabilitation fund program where we can also do CEDG revolving loan funds dedicated towards housing stock. And so those are some things that we'd like to continue thinking about. And it might be best to simply move forward with what we have agreement on relative to the overall sales tax ballot measure.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt a resolution in the City Council of City Council, Kansas, Washington, stating as intonations for the use of funds obtained through Proposition Number 1 relating to affordable and supportive housing. The following passages, which are in the council packet with two amendments. The first is that under Section 1, strike the first sentence. And the second is that under Section 1, in the second sentence, change to fund to assist.
To assist other private.
So just one clarification. So that would be to assist proposals from other private?
That is correct. Or refer to Councilmember French to Section 2. It allows the city clerk and attorney to make necessary clerical collections.
Second. All right. So we got a motion on the table and a second. So basically changing it to fund, to say to assist. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes, you have a say.
If it passes now, we'll see what happens in the effort.
So, and now we're going to move on to, we are at the parking regulations discussion. Okay, so. So in the packet, we have the parking regulations. And so we need a lot of guidance to get to staff on what we want to do. So we have a couple of options, right? So we can modify Chapter 14.4 so that all the minimum parking requirements are now considered the maximum parking requirements. And that leaves the bulk of the ordinance intact. And so it just gives us a maximum. That's in page I, 1. And then the second one is to repeal the whole Chapter 14.4. The third option is to modify the part for the ARUs. And the fifth one is to impose a suspension of Chapter 14.4 for 60 days so that the Department of Commerce gets their 60-day notice. So, and I guess with that, also keep in mind that we have, from staff, we have the potential of also expanding the PBIA for the downtown part.
Not exactly. Providing businesses an opportunity to join PBIA if they're within a G certi-grad region. It doesn't expand the idea.
Thank you for that clarification. So I guess at this point, I want to open it to the council to see how, you know, what are some of the thoughts and which way you want to go about parking discussions.
I would, I would like to especially add two more options to this. And option, the next option would be to move this discussion on parking to our strategic planning meeting at the end of the year. And at that strategic planning meeting, because it's not in our strategic plan right now, nor is it in our scope of work plan this year for 2019. So I would suggest that the next option applied would be to move it, this discussion on parking to the strategic planning meeting and for inclusion in the 2020 work plan. And then the next option would be, having said that, I would then move it cautiously because I know they're an overworked body right now. But I would like to move also, once we put it into the strategic plan, then have it moved down to the planning commission where they're reviewing consideration and recommendations. These are all fine recommendations that you put forward. But they, but they're just recommendations from the council and they don't encompass citizen input at all on these. And I am more than reluctant to tinker with the parking regulations in our city, albeit that proposed change in 14.40 that we're later going to discuss. I don't have a problem with that. That's, that's, it's not a massive overhaul of our parking. Because there's a couple of things. First of all, how many parking spaces are we talking about? What quality of parking spaces are we talking about? How many disabled parking spaces are we talking about? What type of parking spaces are we talking about? Are they garage? Are they parallel? Are they, you know, angled parking? Are they backward angle? Are they forward angle? These are all things that I think not only do we need input on, we need input from the public on it. We need the body that we have created under Port Angeles Municipal Code, Chapter 2.36, i.e. the planning commission, who we have handpicked the individuals to be on that commission to do this research work and come back to us with recommendations. I don't see the sense of urgency of making decisions today or even next meeting on the parking situation overall. I am not opposed to talking about the parking situation in Port Angeles. I would just like to know more about the total picture that we're looking at. For example, the city of Bainbridge Island just recently completed this study. They analyzed that, but they did it with public input. And then they came up with a strategic parking plan. And I would love to see a strategic parking plan made. I really would. And where does a strategic parking plan come about? In the strategic planning meeting that we have at the end of the year. And from that, we build our next year work plan. And we then have a planning commission. And staff do the required, in my opinion, required research to find out, again, what kind of, how many parking spaces are we talking about? What kind of parking spaces should they be? Should they be enclosed? Should they be high-rise? Should they be back-in? Should they? There's just a myriad of questions that are not being addressed by this approach. And so I would respectfully suggest that we take a more strategic look at this problem and do that in the strategic planning meeting at the end of the year when we do our strategic plan for 2020 and 2021. And then develop a work plan and a strategic plan based on sound research and data that have been collected through survey and, you know, just looking at the inventory that we have and how do we, how do we adjust that inventory.
I would appreciate if we could move this to our strategic planning meeting and we could involve our planning commission. This is such an important topic to everyone, the city, council, visitors. I know the residents. Everyone, everyone should have an opportunity. I, I feel that this came on too quickly. And I just feel like it's being just rushed. And this is impacting every single citizen. We must do this in a thoughtful, complete manner. And I really need a lot of public input on that and a lot of information. And I just feel terribly rushed on this. This is something that affects us now and into the future, all of us. Every resident, every business, every visitor. And I just want us to take a very thoughtful, thorough approach. Because when we are addressing this, this is having a lasting effect on our city. So I would like to have more time for research and input. And I would like to see the planning commission involved because I believe that would be appropriate.
So one of the public comments we received at the beginning of this meeting was about how dedication to the status quo isn't working for us. And minimum parking requirements is one of those status quo policies that time and time again, other communities have figured out that they don't work. It's kind of like here, you know, people are like, well, why do we have such a high opioid overdose rate in Port Angeles? Or in Colom County, I talked to a state health official. She said, you know, you had a lot of older doctors who weren't really keeping up on best practices for pain management and were probably the way describing. And it's like, okay, so what's our solution then? Do we, you know, slowly, like, wait? No, we say, you know, if this is not working, stop. Like, stop the thing that is not working. So what we're talking about here is not parking throughout the city. We're talking about a regulation by the city of Port Angeles that prevents people from doing what they want on their own private property. And yet, some of the council members who are the most adamant against government regulation are the most adamant in enforcing and continuing and maintaining government regulation, especially when it doesn't make sense. I don't get it. How are you against the stormwater regulations from Department of Ecology when, which are requiring people who are developing new housing to do all sorts of extra things, some of which are really silly, like dig really long trenches and fill them with pig gravel when they build new housing? And not against the city itself for requiring those people to put in off-street parking? In our own training for developers and contractors and the engineers who are working with them, our demonstration showed, oh, here's a model house on the west side of Port Angeles. If the, the actual house is 1,200 square feet. And that alone would not have triggered those extra stormwater requirements. Because the stormwater requirements kick in at 2,000 feet, 2,000 square feet. So, but you have to add an 800-foot garage and a 600-foot driveway. And there you go. Your impervious surface is over 2,000 square feet. So now we're going to spend three hours explaining all the extra things you have to do because you're over 2,000 square feet. Let's ignore the fact that there's room to park two cars on the street in front of that 50-foot wide lot. But no, I mean, we say one of those spots in front of that house counts. But you still have to have an off-street parking. Why are we telling people what to do on their own private property? If somebody wants a garage, they can build their garage. If they don't want a garage, they don't have to build a garage. What we're doing here is putting the cost of parking into the cost of new housing. Because we're requiring parking as part of new construction. So we were just talking about the importance of more affordable housing. Well, how affordable is it when the cost of parking is built in and required not by the state, not by ecology or some other agency, but by us? This body right here is killing the patient. And it needs to stop. So I'm going to make a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to repeal Chapter 14.40.
Second.
All right. We got a motion on the table and a second. Further discussion.
Nobody's dying here. This is not a patient. I don't see why we can't have a little patience and figure this out. Nobody's prescribing a death pill. We can stop and step back for a minute and figure out what's going to work for the city. Instead, we're just going to rip the son of a bitch up and throw it in the garbage. And then we're done and that's it. No. Why can't this go to the planning commission? Why can't it go to the strategic work session? Why can't it wait a couple of months at the most? This is not going to kill anybody. This is not, Nathan West stood up there and told us that he has not heard of any project that has decided not to build in the city of Port Angeles because of parking regulations. And I believe recently, it's also in our packet of working with a local business owner to help them come up with another solution to make this work. They are there to help businesses. That is what they do. They keep the city running. They keep the economy running in this city and make sure that people are following laws. Three hours for the planning department to explain to somebody stormwater regulations? I'd like to spend three hours complaining why I shouldn't have to do stormwater regulations. But it wouldn't be a three-hour explanation to me to figure that out. What it is, is what it turns into is an argument. I shouldn't have to do that. Well, you should have to do that because that's what this says. But nobody's dying here. This can wait until it goes through the proper process, in my opinion, until we're done. And just throwing this in the garbage, I think, is irresponsible.
So there's a proper legal process? There's a proper legal process and that's having a first reading and a second reading. That's what the state of Washington says. So for those, I just want to correct something that was said that was just incorrect. This is not a surprise. This is not something that we haven't had time to prepare for. We had a council discussion in April. That's five months, four months, four and a half months. All of these concerns were stated in that April council discussion. So it's just not true that this is. So it's just not true that this is a surprise that you haven't had time to digest or research. If you've chosen to not do research, that's not my problem. So we can do both things. We can have a nuanced, you know, it's funny, one of my suggestions in my notes, one of my recommendations, I'll just read it. We have sprawled to now discussing the entirety of our parking regulatory structure. Let's get back on track, reserve the big picture policy discussion that needs to happen around regulation enforcement and capital facility strategy for next year's council, who should try to prioritize these discussions of their strategic planning. So I agree. Let's have that big picture discussion. Let's talk about what capital facilities do we need? Because, you know, one of the really ironic things, whenever we talk about parking, we talk about downtown. Downtown is the one area that's not subject to these parking regulations. Downtown is the one area that has had a bigger picture parking strategy to say, hey, let's have some city-owned service parking lots and share parking responsibilities between us. So, so I'm trying to change parking regulations for the rest of the city to match downtown. And, and I want to have that strategic discussion because we really do need to talk about if we're going to be a viable tourist destination, if we're going to have a downtown waterfront center, all this stuff coming in downtown, what do we need? We probably need more than surface area parking lots. And by the way, we need those surface area parking lots to develop because we need infill. So we need to have that big picture strategy discussion and, and, and we need to prioritize our work plan so that staff gets involved. But then we as a council can make this really easy change, can make this really easy to say, hey, we have this development regulator, so we have this, you know, parking regulations that's costing developments more. It's impossible to prove a negative to say that there's, that, you know, hasn't, I can't remember how it was phrased, but that there have been developments that haven't chosen to develop because of this. It's impossible to prove that, we don't know. And we actually got an email from someone who lives, is a locksmith on Second Avenue, who said, yes, this parking regulation prevented me from development because he wanted to build a shop on his residence. And it's, it's like, I can't remember the exact details, it was zoned improperly or something like that. You know, development regulations do affect people's behavior. We had a public comment talking about why people don't build it up. We have a development regulation against building up. So development regulations affect people's behavior, whether they're developers, whether they're commercial businesses. So, you know, and again, this is probably, I think that this probably, well, I'm not just saying that, but we have control over this section. We can follow a proper legal process to eliminate it and then include it in our strategic plan to have that big picture policy discussion and decide because maybe there is something that we need to require when we have developments, but it's definitely not the matrix that we have. And I'm not going to go and dissect that matrix piece by piece. I don't think that's appropriate use of my legislative authority. And so if we do decide to have some sort of parking requirement at the planning commission level, they can go through and make those bigger picture discussions with our staff and then we can ratify them. But I, I don't, you know, one of the, I just want to back up also and just say, one of my intent issues was, was to not sprawl this issue into some big, huge discussion about parking. I really thought this was a pretty easy fix that we talked about before. We had discussions about it before. We all, I thought, agreed that we didn't want to have these regulations on private property owners and business owners. And so maybe I just really didn't understand what happened at that April discussion in our think tank. I know we didn't make an official motion at that think tank to put it on agenda. We've talked about all the process concerns, you know, at this point. I, I am kind of just tired of this issue. Like I said, we probably, I have a support motion, that's all I'll say.
Jane? Right, well, my question is, Jane. So when I looked and put together this memo, because I know that, just kind of looking for all the different options potentially and now added the two ones, the other ones that Jane Moran has added, I am kind of split about, you know, what's the best thing to do. But I agree, we have old, old code, I mean ancient code. And tending with old code is gone. And sometimes we do need to consider, is that a good thing or a bad thing? It's a scary thing, no doubt about it, right? But sometimes, well, maybe if we break it tonight, we can fix it tomorrow. So it's not that end of the world, but it might actually spur us to get our code updated, which is in dire need of getting updated. So is it, you know, like I said, change is difficult, change is hard. Is this the best thing to do? Well, right now, I think so. Is it going to, you know, cause people to think twice about something? Yes. And again, if we find that we have made a mistake and maybe residences are okay, but it's not a favor for potential businesses, maybe certain, anyone else, we can fix that tomorrow when we see that there's a problem. So I guess I want to tell everybody, if we take action tonight, it again is not prominent, but it's something that actually makes us think in a new way. And I appreciate that, I really do. You know, do I, I know that I talked to the Department of Commerce, and they think we're going to have such a big change, we do need to give them sixty days notice. So that's something that I think will kick in, I believe that that's the case.
Just as a point of clarification, I don't think that's true when we're amending chapter fourteen. And the motion has removed the ARU change that I originally suggested in chapter seventeen. So I don't think that we need to give the Department of Commerce a sixty day notice.
So to repeal the whole chapter?
Yeah, it's not a development regulation. I mean, I, I've used the terms incorrectly, I think, because sometimes I shortcut, but this is a parking regulation. It affects development costs, but it's a parking regulation.
And I guess that's what I mentioned here, and say, you know, but we might have to get.
Staff can disagree if they do, I'll defer.
Well, that's okay. So we can get some legal backing on whether that's the case, yeah.
So Madam Mayor and Council, I don't, I don't want to cut any council member off from discussing the motion that's on the table. I think it's really important that council have a healthy discussion about what's before you this evening. I think it's, it is really important though for staff that we do have a process. And so tonight, you're not likely to hear me even argue the merits of one direction or the other relative to the ordinance that's under the mayor's memorandum. But what I do think is important is process. And I think most of us who sit up here as staff are here prioritizing the public and ensuring the public has an opportunity to weigh in on the process. And I think I would encourage very much council to do the same, to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on what's being proposed. To, to eliminate an entire ordinance without a public opportunity, it will impact ultimately as proposed, it will impact the entire city. And I think that's, that's one that is a very big deal and I think it really is important that we build in some sort of process. Coming back to process, I think it does make a difference to staff ultimately, it makes a difference to the way we function on a daily basis, that we are sticking with the plan. And I think, as you all know, last December, we had a strategic planning retreat where we came up with what the priorities actually are. And while parking came up for discussion, it did not make the council priority list. Council can change that. Council can change the strategic plan. We can relook at priorities and, and reestablish parking as a priority. But I think it's really helpful for us to plan for some of those bigger things in advance. I want to give Director Breckie the credit for bringing up the fact that we moved forward with some substantial parking ordinance changes and what's next because ultimately our entire code is pretty archaic and old and needs to be revised. And so one option that she suggests is potentially we look at a much larger code modification that changes our entire municipal code and does a complete rewrite. That would be a great approach, but it also takes a lot of resources and dedicated staff time to make that happen. But that might be, might be something that council wants to take a look at in the future. But I would really encourage council to take this slow. Yes, it is fairly easy to remove regulations, but it's a lot more difficult and challenging to put them back. And so I would just urge patience with the process and, and let's come up with a process that works for staff and council on this, ideally incorporating it as part of a strategic planning exercise. I want to speak to the strategic planning meeting as well because it's been alluded to that we would be doing one in December of this year. And I want to just clarify that the strategic plan we did last December was a two-year plan. So really December 2020 is when we would plan to do the next strategic plan. That said, we recognize we're going to have some brand-new council members in January. We want to give them an opportunity to take a look at the strategic plan, make sure that that plan is something that they actually want to see implemented at the end of the day. So a number of items for your consideration before you make a vote on this, I would urge caution and patience with the process, but also would respectfully ask that obviously the outcome of your vote will make a difference on this matter, but I do think staff, depending on the vote, may very well want to do an independent and subsequent presentation relative to the other item, which is also a parking ordinance.
Okay, well, thank you for that note, because I know that that's something that, that we had discussed, but I guess one of the things that I'd like to continue on is that if, as the motion states, that having an ordinance written up to strike this allows for two readings. And so there will be.
Potentially a public hearing.
Right, and so there would be some of the public input allowed there. So that's something that, and not to, as I said, in some ways, I don't, it's not that I want to hurry the process and I've looked at all these options and I was trying to figure out what's best. And again, I know that the code needs to be updated and I know that that's something that really, I'm hoping in some ways is actually is easier for staff, parking regulations are gone. So, and so that, in that respect, I think that it allows for, you know, once, it's kind of like, you know, you walk into a room, you have all this junk, once you take that completely out, you actually get to redo something from beginning from scratch and see exactly what is current, current to date versus what is current to when these regulations were in place, what in the 1960s or 70s. So it, like I said, I, I wasn't sure how it was going to go on this and I've been going around and around because I get from a planning standpoint, how big of a change is this and how massive of, you know, a change of thinking. But, you know, as we had the person walking here saying, old thinking is not going to get us out of this fix that we're in today. And this is one good way to go ahead and get rethinking into the station. So with that said, I think.
So I think the more transparent process is to strike this chapter of unnecessary, obviously dangerous code that does kill people because homelessness takes thirty years off your life expectancy. And as opposed to a whole rewrite, which we definitely need, and I would love to see that too, but if we just get rid of the parking memo in that rewrite, then we're not going to be talking about it the same way we're talking about it now. We've gotten a lot more feedback about this because council member French brought it up, the paper wrote it up, and people have gotten back in touch with us. I think Sheldon Kohler's comment to the council was very appropriate. He wrote on the 23rd in an email to this council email, "I'm writing in support of council member Mike French's parking ordinance. Ordinance has changes, at least on the surface. I live in a property zone as a commercial shopping district. Two years ago, I wanted to build a shop on the alley side of my property for my locksmith business. It was to have a small retail counter, but ours would be by appointment only as I'm a one-man shop. I mostly need workspace for related projects as well as inventory storage. Two items killed the project. First was parking. I was told I needed two parking spaces off-street and one, and one had to be ADA. I don't object to ADA accessibility, but in the manner it is required for my situation. I can see this being an issue for other potential businesses. There's plenty of parking on the street in my neighborhood and this requirement was an expense I didn't need. Second was the 15-foot setback from the alley. This basically robbed half of my backyard. Up and down the existing alley are many structures right on the edge of the alley or much closer than 15 feet. I was told there was no exceptions. My shop was never built. The council has many times in the past talked about wanting growth, but everywhere we turn, regulations add expenses, making any investment inside the city unless in Port Angeles too expensive." So that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about getting rid of parking in Port Angeles. People are not going to have to walk from the edge of town into the center of town or, you know, only be able to park in downtown because it's still the parking business improvement district. What we're talking about here is the city not requiring new businesses and new residences to, to, to have to have off-street parking. In this neighborhood, I live several blocks away from the person whose email I just read, you know, I've stood in the corner of Third and Oak with someone else in the audience and we've looked around and we've assessed the number of multifamily housing units right there on that corner and a bunch of, there's like three apartment buildings and a bunch of little like, what we now talk tiny houses, but they were just working-class houses at the time they were built. And you can still find parking there, right? If we were trying to build all of that now, that intersection would be a bunch of parking lots. But the people who live there, I mean, a block away from where I live, I don't hear people complain about parking. There's enough parking. If somebody still wants to have parking, they can build it. We're not making this the maximum, although there's many communities that have adopted parking maximums, that is a really good policy. That's not the proposal on the books or, or out there up here. And what the purpose of this policy is, is not to actually strike this from the code here and now. The motion is to direct staff to bring back an ordinance to do this. And in terms of the strategic plan, we have in our strategic plan an item to, where did it go? The form-based code, basically transition the zoning code from function-based to form-based by December 31st, 2020. I don't want to confuse the issue, this is parking, not zoning, but when we're talking about form-based, we're talking about the look of the city, how, how it looks, what is the urban form? And in that, parking is going to play a big role. So for those who are like, well, this isn't in our plan, actually, we, we need to address it when we're talking about a form-based code and it's in there by the end of next year. So let's start to move in the right direction by cutting this unnecessary government bureaucratic red tape. Thank you.
A couple of things. First of all, I, I don't understand the necessity of bypassing an organization that we constituted to give us advice on this in the first place, and that's the planning commission. I see the two city council members, they're Googling everything on their computers. I would, I would recommend that you Google Port Angeles Municipal Code, Chapter 2.36 and read it. Here's my problem. We are going to, by eliminating this section of the code, and I understand that we're just asking staff to come back with an ordinance, but I'm going to get staff even taking up staff's time to do that. Why? Because you're asking us to make a decision that affects 10,000 homes in Port Angeles. That's how many, how many parking spaces is that? By, by eliminating this ordinance, we're changing the entire scope of parking in our city. I don't think that's a, a thing that we should be doing without a significant amount of input from the people that it is ultimately going to affect. Now, I'm not opposed to, to changing code or adjusting and so forth, but I would like to have a significant amount of input from the people that it's going to affect through a commission that we ourselves handpicked to put in place to do this particular job. I've looked at a number of cities that have done this. Every one that I've looked at, and I referenced Bainbridge Island, bring up their, their, their strategic parking survey. They did not rush into this. They understood they had some archaic codes, but what they did is they took a survey of their citizens, they did a inventory analysis, and then based on that, they put together their strategic code, okay? So we are, we have control over this, yes, but the analogy on stormwater, I actually resent because we have no control over what the state dictates to us in the form of unfunded mandates. This is something that we do have control over and for us not to have input from our citizens where we can control the results of this is not the proper action to take. And I would, we probably know on this.
Just a point of clarification. I, I would just recommend sitting through that three-hour stormwater training, it's available online, and you'll see that we actually cause homeowners who are building new houses to invoke many of those regulations because of this policy.
I'm really not a fan of parking, and I'm feeling really torn about the process of moving forward, which kind of surprised me, actually. So, I, I mean, I don't have anything particularly articulate to add, and I think all of the comments that have been made, particularly in favor of doing this, make a lot of sense to me, and fundamentally, I completely support the idea of just scrapping and starting over. And I'm also hearing staff and feeling a little reluctant to just look through it.
I would really appreciate the opportunity to hear from this agency manager regarding the report that Councilmember Sherman Warner read, from a problem, a person having a problem with parking. You know, if I found that taking issues to staff, our staff, then somewhere backwards to work with everyone and make things possible, but I just, I would like to hear from staff regarding that. I don't think it's fair to throw out a problem that reflects poorly on staff without a response. But I do want to also say, the maker of the motion said we, we agreed to work on changing our, our cake, and we agreed that our, our codes by the end of 2020, okay, we have plenty of time, we don't have to do it tonight, we don't have to do it to week, we don't have to have this shoved down our throat. This is a public process, it should be a public process. So, I, I also urge caution and patience, but I would like to hear from city staff in reference to a report that's been made this evening.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'd be happy to speak to that to the extent I have knowledge of it, but I, I would first refer to Director Breckie, who may have more knowledge of it than I do.
So, I do have knowledge about that particular email that was read in the property at hand. So, overall, the, the email was correct, but largely, it was this setback issue that was problematic. There was not enough room to build the building that was designed by the applicant. I did not speak to this person directly. I got this history from my staff that I talk to on a daily basis now when these problems arise. I also will take the opportunity to share what else I hear from the community that I work with every single day. Every time an accessory residential unit is proposed, we get letters, public comment from residents and neighborhoods that are worried about the parking congestion. Number one top priority. I also talk to businesses about just the need to require parking. They largely actually tell us that they would like to require more parking. I'll give you an example, I live at the Medical Center, and then a potential fast-food chain restaurant. They want to provide more parking, so that, in theory, the maximum might be able to help with that. Other conversations we have about parking, I think we hear a lot from the community about people parking not in a parking area, and I think we need to step back and think about maybe potential consequences when you strike a large section of the code, and the reality is, people are still driving cars, and people are still going to park, and if there's not accurate, you know, adequate parking, they will likely park in a place that's not adequate in terms of surfacing. And that can touch on some other things that, you know, maybe out there to say the word stormwater. Overall, I think you all know that we are very eager to work with owners, business and property owners, and have flexibility. The other problem we face is that when we talk to our designers who are turning in projects, we keep asking for information that they aren't able to provide to us. For example, you have to fill out your building permit, and you show a square footage of a building, and, and we have to base parking on floor area, not just your gross square footage. There have been many, 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 many situations where you're asking for that floor area of the actual space to help, you know, you know, justify that not as much parking is needed. We rarely get that. So, yes, you could say that the regulations is causing, causing the problem, but it's not entirely accurate. I think all in all, parking is involved in many other parts of the code. I would argue that it is very much a development standard for the commerce description. We can talk about that at a staff level and council level, but overall, there are a lot of conversations that are, are held. I think the other conversation that comes to mind outside of the new gym that's being built outside of downtown, the other one would be a parking lot that exists, and they blocked off part of it for storage, and then they added a couple of apartments in the building, sort of legally, and now they want to change that. So, anyway, they might say that parking's an issue, but the reality is actually something else that's going on. I feel like you might hear as council members that parking is the problem, but it's not the full story, and I know that you might not get that at every conversation. I recognize I might not get that with every conversation, but I just need to tell you that it's one chapter of the code, yes, but it's touching on many other parts of the larger code.
Anybody else who'd like to come in?
And just to clarify, after seeing the email that I read, I forwarded it to Director Breckie and Manager West.
So, I guess I, I would like to comment some more a little bit on this. Not that I have anything to say, except that I, I do recognize that this is not something staff wants, right? I get that, and I also get how difficult some of this will be, but I also get that sometimes it's okay to do something that's really different, just because it might expose to do a lot of other things. And so that, you know, some of these regulations aren't so, of course, I'm, you know, they're just not so, we don't have to protect them this much, they're, they're actually a problem, and if we can actually just cut it out and see what happens. Right now, not one single parking lot will be lost tomorrow. Every single parking lot, every single parking space that exists today won't disappear tomorrow. So, all those houses already have a driveway, they already have a garage, that, you know, so every single parking space today is not going to disappear. So, especially downtown, all the parking spaces are going to be there. As to our regulations, where should they park? Well, that doesn't change. You still have parking regulations as to where you can park or where you can't. That was no go-away. So, just so everybody knows, you know, you still can't park in a red zone, you still can't park in a, whatever, a yellow zone. Those regulations are still there, and then as to parking spaces, they will not disappear tomorrow. So...
And the other point is that the, you know, I totally think it's really good that you pointed out that this is not changing a single parking space tomorrow, this is changing the future of Port Angeles's parking, and, you know, one of the, the clarifications that I'd also make to remind us is, the motion has taken out the ARU or ADU change, so that is not part of our motion. But, you know, a lot of Port Angeleses, Lindsay kind of alluded to, was developed before these parking regulations. You know, I was walking to my friend's house, he lives in the Cherry Hill, south of by SARS Market area, and a lot of those houses don't have driveways. So, if we saw a city of Port Angeles that was in a, in an instant developed the way these parking regulations would have required, it would be a radically different city, and I don't think that we would recognize it, and I don't think that it would work as a city. Downtown wouldn't exist. I think it would be, it would be, so, I think that we often see the status quo as just something that needs to be protected at all costs, because we're scared of what might exist without it, but it's, you know, a lot of times we fail to then criticize the status quo, what it's not providing, and, and I think that this is a change that really isn't as scary as it seems, and I think that we should pass this motion.
All right, folks, we have discussed this, not really.
Madam Mayor, can we reread the motion?
Yeah, go ahead. I have it moved by, from Warner, submitted by French to repeal Chapter 14.40, Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to off-street parking.
I'd like to clarify the motion, but I think I need to direct staff to repair a motion to repeal, I'm sorry, to prepare the ordinance to repeal Chapter 14.40.
So, this will not repeal it, this will just prepare the ordinance to repeal it.
Look, I know you're not asking for public comment right now, but I sat here and listened to all of you talk about compassion.
Yes.
And...
Bill, Bill, I'm sorry.
But what about...
Yes, I know it's point of order.
We sat here and talked about compassion, and you're leaving the public out of this?
So, we will have a space for the public to speak. So, there will be, the, that, the motion is to bring in the public. All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay.
No, no.
All right, and fails four to three.
So, I'm going to make a motion to the modified Code 17.94.070 to delete Item G, which removes the parking requirements for accessory residential units.
Is there a copy of that somewhere nearby?
Yes.
Yeah, page I, two, item three.
All right, so we got a motion, do we have a second? So, so, Council, do we have a second on this motion? Okay, this motion dies for a lack of seconds. Okay, so, we will move on, I guess, from, I don't know, to the, we still have to do the amendment to off-street parking. So, this is Item G1. All right, so folks, so we have, I guess, Mr. West, this one's your end.
To Director Breckie to start us off.
Okay.
Okay, Council, this ordinance is proposed as an effort to increase options for a property owner and or business owner when they need to demonstrate parking provisions for proposed development. First of all, this proposed ordinance is in no way comprehensive analysis of the current off-street parking chapter of the municipal code. Instead, it is an amendment to expand upon the opportunity to enter into a cooperative parking agreement to meet parking requirements. Rather than solely depending on private property, and private properties, this amendment allows a property or business owner to enter into an agreement with the city of Port Angeles to use public parking lots with the city's park, within the city's parking and business improvement area of the PBIA to meet partner agreements. This agreement will require special assessment to pay as determined by city code. The 500-foot justification that you see in the proposed ordinance, that's, I think, roughly 500, 500 feet is about the distance of a city block. It's also recognized as the appropriate distance that people feel comfortable walking, and then, thirdly, it is a distance that's already in that chapter of code, and so we felt there was some consistency to use that same distance.
It also looks the most like a car.
Yes. So, I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, Council, any questions? All right, and how do you guys want to move forward if there's no questions? So, we can commit the first here and remove this ordinance, it says, "An Ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, Amendment, Chapter 14.40 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to off-street parking." So, this will be the first reading. Are there any comments or, okay, and then we'll continue this to September 17th.
Well, I, I agree with continuing it to the 17th, but I just wanted to comment, I do think we should consider potentially a wider distance from the PBIA. You know, we, we expect people to walk more than 500 feet in that downtown area. What's the harm with going further out? And I do agree with not moving the second reading here.
And I would agree with you. I would, I would expand it to its widest, because it doesn't, I would, just to be more inclusive, and so, but that's where I would align on that. Any comments from other council members?
I just would like to point out that the staff is recommending 500 feet based on consistency with other elements of code. Additional distance may require further analysis, so this is a very positive step forward, and we can discuss lengthening it at a later date with further analysis and input from staff.
Because I'm slowly going blind, will the yellow area include the new gym and their parking issue?
Yes.
Madam.
And Council, for the record, it also includes the other property mentioned off of Laurel Street, relative to the email that Councilmember Warner mentioned. I think it's really important that when we change code, we're changing it for the entire community, not changing it for one specific business.
And I think it's, I'm probably, just to say it out loud, an important clarification that this isn't saying everyone has to opt in, it's saying everyone within that yellow line may opt in if they choose to. Right, that may be true inside too, but just, that this allows the business, a business inside that line to join regardless of whether the next-door neighbors are, so it doesn't require the full length of the block, which is the important clarifying piece for me.
So, one quick question, how, which doesn't need to be answered now, is, is that what if there's a business or a property that is partially within 500 feet, but not entirely within 500 feet? Is that in or is that out?
In.
Is that...
That's what we do with everything else, in.
Any further discussion? All right, so, we will continue this to September 17th and 19th.
All right, and that gets us to our lady on, so, Mr. West.
Sweet, Director Hunter is going to present that item, thanks. Well, thank you, Council. Tonight, before you, you have a memorandum that is seeking to kind of get out in front of an issue that we've been watching for quite some time, both in previous years and this year as well. This weekend, we watched as well as the Bell Water River continued to decline 307 cubic feet per second this morning, and down to 302 by the time that the mayor calls this meeting in order. So, at this time, what we would like to do is respectfully request that the city council authorize the city manager to implement Stage 3 water shortage restrictions on the use of water as detailed in the Water Shortage Response Plan when thresholds for Stage 3 have been reached. So, essentially, what we're doing, it might be slightly different, I just really want to highlight this, is that we believe that prior to the next council meeting, we will have reached that Stage 3 point, and we don't want to have a special meeting to get the authorization granted for the city manager, or potentially have to wait when the forecast calls that we're going to hit this stage. And to be clear, further on in the memo, we've outlined what those kind of restrictions are, and they're really the non-essential uses. Some of us would, would honestly believe that these are kind of common, some of these are common sense things, but they're really highlighted. Most importantly, is part of this declaration, if and when the city manager were to authorize it, I think is more so the communication and how we communicate with the public about those expectations, utilizing social media, and just kind of pushing that information out there. So, with that... So, um, with that, uh, turn back over and have, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Um, no, but I did, uh, when I talked to Manager West this morning, uh, I don't know what the regular procedure is, and there may already be a procedure in place, but, um, I, I just was asking about proactive communication to some of our larger areas, like the college, for example, that has a lot of grass that they water, and, uh, not just grass, but landscaping that they water on a very regular basis between hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. So, um, just giving them a heads up, um, so they can plan accordingly. I don't know what the usual way is, but rather than assuming they're going to read it in the paper. So I will move, uh, to authorize the city manager to implement stage three water shortage restrictions on the use of water as detailed in the water shortage response plan when thresholds for stage three have been reached.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion?
I had to correct my question for item five, sprinkling an area of law and ground cover of plants between the hours of 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, or on any day not authorized by established rotation schedule. Can you say more about the rotation schedule, please?
So in this case, the rotation schedule is the even odd schedule, so homes with a, um, house number having an odd day would, um, obviously water, um, and they would alternate based off of the side of the street. And that will be clarified at the point in which that communication went out. So yeah, we've kind of got a very detailed plan we have to go through.
And I should clarify, I meant between 9:00 and 6:00, 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Also, I just thought it was funny because we were joking earlier that, um, I generally consume the entire pitcher and my water bottles, so we were joking about applying partial responsibly for the water shortage situation. So I do not water my lawn, though, just to be clear.
So, w- one thing that folks may be wondering about is, well, didn't we just get a bunch of rain? Well, not a bunch, I mean, not enough to make a difference. So I just pulled up the L. R. Water Data from USGS, which it sounds like, um, Director Hunter was looking at as well, because the most recent experience value is 302 cubic feet. And there was a little bump up on the 30th, but it didn't really go up over the rest of the weekend, um, and so it's still just slowly turning down. Um, and so yeah, we've gotten some rain, but my guess is that the groundwater, or that the ground is just so porous, it's going with the ground and hasn't actually gotten through.
Alright, any further discussion? All those who take the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Alright, aye, I think, uh, so we are now at council reports. Uh, Jim, can we start and do this, Jim?
Okay. Thank you. A brief report, um, and, uh, this is kind of, uh, goes along with tonight's theme, if you will. Uh, I attended the belting ceremony for, um, our departed, uh, friends and neighbors who served in the military, our veterans, on Friday. Uh, it gave me a couple of things. First of all, it gave me firsthand experience, uh, or firsthand look at the new wrought iron panels that are going up around the Liberty Bell. They're, uh, three sides are done, uh, they're very, very nice, and I talked to Bob Stokes, and you'll have the front panel done by the end of this week. Uh, I agree that it's sad that we have to, to put these, those panels up, but on the other hand, uh, I got also a firsthand look at, very close up, at the destruction and vandalism that was wrought on the, uh, the bell. And I can tell you, as a Vietnam veteran, uh, it was very painful and heartbreaking for me to see this destruction and vandalism. And anyway, uh, so, uh, having said that, I did, uh, attend a very moving, uh, ceremony. There was 36, uh, veterans that, uh, passed away during the month of August, and, um, the bell was rung one time for each thing that was read. Uh, two names were of particular interest to me. First of all was, um, Mr. Leland Porterfield. And anybody who's been here in Port Angeles for any length of time and has either been taught by Mr. Porterfield or has parents taught by Mr. Porterfield. Longtime, uh, city, uh, Port Angeles teacher, beloved, uh, author. He wrote, uh, The History of Clowen County, which is a Mexico copy table book. He and his wife, Gwen, were docents for the Carnegie Museum when it was in Carnegie Library, and, uh, just, just a wonderful man. And so the second person of note was, uh, Warren Charles Mitchell. Now, that may name, may not be a household name to you, but, uh, Mr. Mitchell was, uh, the Coast Guard commanding officer of the U.S. Coast Guard Station in Port Angeles from 1963 to 1965. And so, uh, in, in, in a sign of compassion and, uh, condolences, the commanding officer of Port Angeles Coast Guard Station Commander Scott Jackson was in attendance at this Friday belting cer- ceremony. So we had 36 families grieving for their lost, uh, loved ones, uh, people that have served our country and allow us to have this kind of, uh, the grief that we've had experienced. Uh, I, it was, uh, an opportunity to show compassion, and, uh, I was moved by being there, and I'm glad I did. Now report.
So I want to thank the mayor for rearing us in the council agenda, the way that, I think, helped to facilitate, um, more of the information that we learned going out to the public as well. Um, so thank you. I like the way the reading was done. On August 21st, I attended, along with several staff members in the planning department, um, a municipal research service center webinar on what some cities are doing to provide shelter for people experiencing homelessness. It was mostly a case study, uh, from the city of Olympia. Uh, they were facing a situation where a number of people began to encamp in the city on a parking lot. Uh, it prompted the city to declare a declaration of emergency, which allowed for funds to be used in, in different ways, um, because of the state of emergency there. And ultimately, they decided to turn all their parking lots into sanctioned encampments with city provided tents, et cetera. Um, from there, people transitioned into a tiny house village, and from there, the city of Olympia representatives said, there's not really much to go. So I mean, that's the problem, right? It's, okay, we've got people on the streets living without shelter, we can provide tents, we can provide tiny houses or, or commissary shelters, which we learned about at the Association of Washington Cities Conference, and, but then from there, we don't have permanent housing. So let's make sure we look at what the exit plan is. There's a document, it's short, it's four pages from the U.S. Area Agency Council on Home. It's nice talking about caution for cities and other governments that are considering temporary solutions, because often, temporary solutions turn permanent. Um, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of trying to move in that direction, and at the same time, if we don't start to move the housing stuff forward, which we've done nothing on in a year and a half, then that's what we're going to have to do. I mean, the State Planning Association said, you know, we've been saying, no, 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 like, don't go into those temporary things. And then recently, like, says, say, you know what, like, as planners, like, we need to get involved in this because this is the reality. Now, if we don't start to move this housing stuff, we're talking about basically permanent slums in our cities. Right, we're talking about looking like the global south. So let's move on some of this. Let's not say, like, oh, this isn't our problem, or, oh, let's wait for our staff to come back with the right report. And I just looked over the, um, planning commission's tasks. Their task is to provide research and studies and that sort of thing. We know minimum housing requirements are a bad deal. That's in study to death. I won't read as if that is true, I'm sorry. I also attended a Caltrans board meeting. A lot of good things happening there. Uh, I did attend, as I mentioned before, the school district's, uh, all-staff keynote speaker, who's Dr. Jeff Duncan-Andrade. Um, if you have an opportunity to look him up on, like, YouTube, for example, some of those presentations are there. Uh, he's a fantastic speaker, um, talking about, uh, the importance of taking care of all students and taking care of all families. I know as a, as a council member, I sometimes ask people, you know, hey, what should the city do more to, um, you know, improve Port Angeles, or whatever my comp is? And people say, we need better schools. And I'm like, schools are a special purpose district, what should the city do? And they're like, schools! So, yeah, we need to get on that. On that note, Superintendent Brewer mentioned, you know, two initiatives in here. One is the equity initiative. The other is capital. And he provided a sobering number, which is that the school district is $300 million behind, in need for capital improvements. And they can only bond 170 million. So they can only bond about half of what they actually need to bring everything up. I'm not sure if there'd be stated to repair exactly what he meant there, but, uh, they can't even bond it all, even if they pass the bond. So that's important, um, for us to think about for our community as well. Um, I really want to make another echo for the Caltransilience Project, funded by United Way and trained for agencies. I, I've learned a lot from the meetings I've gone to there, and, you know, if, if staff or other, other people who have, um, you know, work in, whether nonprofits or anything dealing with the public, um, I would highly recommend applying for that. The deadline might have been today. I've continued to be involved with the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities Committee, um, which continues to meet, and will give recommendations to the Association of Washington City Board for what that organization, which we're a member of, will lobby for in the next coming legislative session. I want to talk a little bit about public hearings and common question. Um, you know, we, as the council, have talked about the electric COSA for the months, um, so we've had it sink in about the impact of the base rate and all of that. Um, this was the first time we actually asked the public their thoughts about it. We had a couple of people comment, and, you know, it was the things that I remember thinking when I first saw it, which is, that's doubling the base rate. So rather than explore that, say, well, you know, let's, let's make sure we address those comments, we moved on. Um, this is our only time to talk as a policymaking body, is when we're sitting here together in open, open meeting. And it's important for us to have those conversations. Finally, there was a, um, there's a public comment concerning the fence and the lack of public conversation going into the fence on the Liberty Bell. And I wanted to just point out, since that came up again, Port Angeles Municipal Code, section 12 dot 04 dot 030 is the parks code concerning closed areas. And it says, it's only like four sentences, so I'll just read it. "Any sectional portion of any park may be declared closed by the director at any time, either temporarily or irregularly stated intervals, except for the Eric Smith Freefield Skate Mark. This park can only be closed by the city manager or his or her designated meeting with a recommendation from the director. If a section of a park will remain closed for more than a month or have its use changed permanently, the director shall consult with the Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission." Looking over the process that happened for the Liberty Bell, I noticed that this requirement is simply that the director shall consult with the Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission. It's not actually that the director shall receive the approval, uh, or, um, you know, basically any vote. And by my reading of the minutes of the last Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission meeting, we didn't actually vote to put the fence in. So, you know, that's an example of an issue that we know is a public controversy. And the original press release, or, or press communication was that, oh, we know this is important, so we'll go to the city council. No, actually, we have a policy in place, which is this closed area policy, but it doesn't really have a public process. Even the advisory board wasn't required to make a vote, simply that the director consulted, which he certainly did. Um, so that's something that, you know, when we're thinking about public process and transparency, I would like us to consider changing this to require the people, the people's representatives to actually make a decision, especially when we know it's going to be something that is, is, was a public controversy as that was. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for excusing me last time, I feel much better. Um, I also was at the Caltrans meeting, um, and just want to point out that, um, we also, like Jefferson, passed our transportation development plan for 19, uh, 2019 and 2024. Um, and I'm impressed with what I perceive as some forward motion and, um, broader thinking that, um, about transit within the agency. So, um, I feel good about the work that we've been doing there, uh, this year. Um, I also had the opportunity in a fun part of my council, I probably would have done it anyway, but, um, I was a bartender at the Farah fundraiser at the Yacht Club last Thursday. Um, and that was really fun. And it's a nice, something different to do once in a while. Um, I also, um, participated in the opioid awareness walk on Saturday evening, um, and was just reminded how important it is that we continue to work towards supporting, um, all of the members of our community who suffer with, uh, any kind of addiction, um, and how indiscriminate that addiction can be. Um, and that it's really good to participate in things like that and have the visual reminder, despite intuitively understanding that it can be anybody and everybody. Um, so I appreciated that and had the opportunity to talk with the people who are now working with PA Cannon, suggested that it might be nice for them to come at some point and give us a, a brief update about the work that they're doing in the community. Uh, that's all for now.
Board meeting.
Hold on. Over that report. Are you going in, right?
Nope.
Um, I just saw something in the paper, I was very proud of our council, for, um, the BMX track out at Lincoln Park had, there's, had a state competition bringing 1,200 people to Port Angeles. It was so successful. They're going to have another state competition here in Port Angeles. That used to be, um, kind of a rundown and inefficient track, and there's been some changes, and they came to the, last year, uh, they came to the lodging tax committee, and I remember they asked them for $50,000, which was a huge sum, and very brave of them to even come and ask for that large sum, but they told us what the improvements would be, they shared their vision, and they told us, if we build it, they will come, and it worked. And I'm really proud of Port Angeles, and I'm really proud of the use of this lodging tax fund, and I'm proud of the volunteers that went to work and turned that into such a successful place for locals and for tourists. So when I see things that happened a year or two ago and what's come of it, it just makes me proud of this city council and, and the work we do and all the members of the lodging tax committee that work so hard and, and the community that comes to us and says, we can do this, and by God, they did.
Alright, thank you for that. Um, so, uh, this couple of weekends, we're best in a swarm all time, and we, we fly that flag, I believe it's right now flying, I thought. So, um, so in, um, I guess it's Sisterhood, we fly their flag during breakfast, they fly our flag during, uh, crab nest. Um, I also attended the NODC, climate change was discussed during that meeting, and, um, again, the push for putting climate action items on the comprehensive plan. So that is the end of our.
So Council, I have, um, I don't have reports for you this evening, but I too wanted to address, uh, some of the public comment we heard relative to veterans' part, because I do think, uh, Councilmember Sherman Warren, um, made a very good point relative to code, and, and the decision in code, uh, does allow for the Parks and Recreation Director to make that decision. But I do want to share that the director by no means made that decision without substantial public process. And I think it's really important, uh, to recognize the diligence that the Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission actually put forward in their thought and care for an issue that was extremely controversial in the, in the community. Um, it's an issue that they took a great deal of time with and care with, and I would encourage anyone, while, while different people have different opinions relative to process and how long that should be and what it should entail, I was encouraged in listening to the tapes of both of those meetings, hearing the diversity of views that we had in the community relative to what should and shouldn't happen in that instance, and particularly in the second, uh,
And particularly in the second consideration by the Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission, the recording, I think, really made clear the diligence and thought that each committee member had relative to arriving at the conclusion that they came up with at the end of the day. So by no means was that an easy decision, but I think your committee did a great job of performing the work that they should be performing for you, and certainly I'm appreciative of Director Delacott also handling a very difficult decision. And again, that, those recordings are located on the city website under the archive section of the city website.
I'm sorry to burn your own, Jim, but we've since had a number of people come to our public comment and say, I was at that first meeting, I thought I was made a call to be part of a process, and then I found out that it was done. So that's the feedback we've gotten out of the council. So the process was not good.
I appreciate those opinions, but I think there's different perspectives on it. And I think, I think too, what I would encourage is for individuals to listen to the recordings for themselves and decide, you know, ultimately, was there a sufficient public process or not?
Thank you for that. All right, we are now at the second public comment period, so if anybody would like to talk to us about anything, would you step up to the mic, state your name and whether you were listening.
You could extend beyond ten or just go?
Right now, we're so.
I'll just go.
I'm going to extend the meeting until the end of public comment.
So, yeah, and John Rawlsen, City of Port Angeles, I just had one question. That the auditor has accepted the ballot measurement for the tax. I don't know if it was in the paper or any, on the city's website or anything, if there was any sunset clause within the ballot label. Simple question. Thank you.
And actually, we have a motion on the table in a second, so we're going to blow this. So all those who think of a motion to extend the meeting past that, can you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So who would I expect to get an answer from on that?
It's a good question as to the extension, yeah, would they, so if you could make one that'd be great.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
First, I'd like to apologize for speaking up. However, as I sat here listening to people talk about transparency over and over again, as I listened to 45 minutes of compassionate discussion, I felt like those things that were talked about were not even being considered when you were talking about ramrod-ing the change in the parking that has been established. Yes, I agree, things sometimes need to be changed, but I felt like it was just being shoved down our throats, and that's not what I heard here from the previous people about compassion and transparency. I also would like to add that I have lived in this community for a long time. I grew up here. I had Mr. Porterfield for a teacher. Back when I was in seventh grade, I had a locker right outside his room, and we girls decided to get in our lockers and lock each other in. And as soon as the bell rang, we were all locked in, and he very nicely came out and unlocked us all. So that was something I always remember about Mr. Porterfield. I also, we moved back here. I grew up here. I moved away, taught school several different places, came back and taught here, and then moved away again. And I'm glad to be back, and I'm hoping that I can continue to come to the meetings and hear the community input, hear that the community input is important. Thank you.
And actually, before you, could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, yes, Nancy Walters.
Okay, thank you. And just so you know, what, the motion that we have made was to have the document drawn up, and then we would have public hearings so that the public could have a report on that. That's what the motion was.
Well, I didn't take that out of what I heard. What I heard was that you wanted to scrap that ordinance or whatever you call it.
And then there'd be, so, once that motion was made, then we would have had two hearings about that. So just, I guess that's the process then.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, Jim. Thank you. All right, anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to counsel? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.